Vice Chair, we need to start the meeting.
Okay, thank you Nancy. Good evening Vacaville. We appreciate everyone who is participating in tonight's planning commission teleconference meeting. This meeting will be conducted consistent with Assembly Bill 361 Resolution Number 2021-88 and Government Code Section 54953 subdivision E. Please bear with us as we attempt to use remote tools. Planning Commission meetings can be viewed live on the city's website at www.cityofvacaville.com or on cable channel 26. Instructions to participate from a computer are provided on the city's website at www.cityofvacaville.com. You may connect via the link listed on the agenda. If you are following along on the telephone and prompted for a participant ID, press the pound sign or hashtag to be connected to the meeting. If you are planning to participate, please follow along on the telephone, not channel 26 since there is a broadcast delay. Callers who wish to comment can raise their hand by pressing star nine. Depending on your individual settings, you may need to press star six after you are unmuted by the host in order to open your mic. And finally, computer users requesting to speak can click the raise hand button within their Zoom controls. So by now you probably realize that Chair McCauley is not chairing the meeting tonight. So no need to address your screens. There is a black man running tonight's meeting. I just hope you bear with me. This is my first one. With that, Nancy, can you please call the roll?
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. Chair McCauley is excused. Vice Chair Klein.
Here.
Commissioners Aldridge.
Here.
Beaumont.
Here.
Brecken.
Here.
Fortney.
Here.
Anne Lightfoot.
Here.
Vice Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you Nancy. I would like to begin this meeting by asking Planning Commission, or excuse me, we will now present the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance
Allegiance to the flag
of the United States of America.
America.
And one with one republic and to it stands indivisible with liberty and justice for all. That's not the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm sorry. Can I try that again? Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I do, please do bear with me. This is a, I also do weddings on the side, so. Just kidding. Okay. So I believe we have all, excuse me, staff, are there any communications for this evening's meeting?
Thank you Vice Chair Klein. There are some communications for this evening's meeting and they are all posted on the website. I'm just going to briefly read through what's there. We have a meeting flyer for the Solano County Regional Housing Element Meetings on January 26th and 27th. A Vacaville Housing Strategy slash Element Meeting Flyer for February 2nd. And we have correspondence from Margaret Mullen on the Oak Grove Apartments Project, which is not before the commission this evening. An email from Diane Zimmerman about the Allison Apartments Project, which is Item 7A. An email from Barbara Dwyer from the Academy of 21st Century Learning for Item 7B. And lastly, an email from Doug Chen of Discovery Builders also for Item 7B. And those are all the communications.
Thank you Erin. I believe we have all reviewed the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Beaumont moved to approve.
Is there a second?
Aldridge.
All second. Fortney.
I see. That's Fortney's second. All right. Thank you. A rule call vote.
Commissioners Aldridge.
Yes.
Beaumont.
Yes.
Brecken.
Yes.
Fortney.
Yeah.
Lightfoot.
Yes.
Vice Chair Klein.
Yes. Okay, we now move to business from the floor. This is the time to address the commission with issues that are not on the agenda, that are within the commission's subject matter jurisdiction. There is a maximum three minutes per speaker. Does anyone wish to address the commission regarding a topic or issue that does not appear on tonight's agenda? If so, please raise, raise your hand button, or if you're on the phone, press star nine.
Vice Chair, I see no one.
Thank you Nancy. I'll go ahead and close business from the floor and move to Item 6 Consent Calendar. Now is the time for the consent calendar. We have one item on the consent calendar, and that's the minutes of the December 7th, 2021 Planning Commission Meeting. Does anyone from the commission or the public wish to pull this item from consent or discussion? Okay, do I have a motion? In a second.
I shall move. Aldridge moves approval.
Okay, moved by Aldridge. Is there a second?
Second. Fortney.
I can, I thank you Mike. Okay, please call the roll.
Commissioners Aldridge.
Yes.
Beaumont.
Yes.
Brecken.
Yes.
Fortney.
Yeah.
Lightfoot.
Yes.
Vice Chair Klein.
Yes. We'll now move to item number seven, and that's our public hearings. Now it is time for, we have two items on the scheduled for public hearings, excuse me, for this evening. For each item, I will introduce the item. Staff will make a brief presentation to the commission, and I will see if commissioners have questions of staff. I will then open the public hearing and allow the project applicant to address the commission, followed by any commissioners question, or followed by any commissioner questions for the applicant. I will then allow members of the public to speak for up to three minutes. I will then close the public hearing and bring the discussion back to the commission. So the first item appearing before us is the Allison Apartments Project. And I believe that's with Senior Planner Albert Enalt. He'll present this item for us. Albert?
Thank you Vice Chair. This is Albert Enalt, Senior Planner with the Community Development Department. And I'm presenting to the commission the Allison Apartments. So some background about this project. It was originally submitted to the city in February 2021. And in September 2021, City Council approved a DDLA, and the project review process resumed after that. November 2021, Planning Commission reviewed this project and voted 7-0 to recommend to City Council approval of the project. And then it went to City Council, and City Council had lots of discussions during their meeting and ultimately voted 6-1 to continue the project. And there were a couple of reasons why. It was to allow the applicant and staff an opportunity to address the concerns that were discussed by council during their meeting. And it was also intended to bring this back before the Planning Commission with any of those revisions that had been made by the applicant. And so in this month, earlier this month, the applicant had submitted revised project plans to the city. And so here we are with the revised request. It includes a density bonus, a planned development, and a tentative parcel map. And the request is to construct 135 units for affordable. And it's on a 3.65 acre site that's located southeast corner of Allison Drive and Nuttree Parkway. Now where this project is located, it's within the Allison Priority Development Area. And there was the original Allison Priority Development, the original Allison Priority Development Area, which was approved in 2015, you'll see in blue on the map. And then there was later a 2019 expansion. And I know we had talked about this at the November Planning Commission and City Council, so we thought we'd give a refresher for the commission that this priority development area was mainly a vision from council as part of an implementation from the 2015 adoption of the general plan, which is to create a mixed-use, transit-rich type of development. And that's where that blue area is. You can see jobs that are being provided by the Travis Credit Union in multiple retail areas surrounding this project in the Vacaville Commons, as well as restaurants and eating establishments for residents. There's also the Ulatas Community Center that's located along Ulatas Drive, and various apartment projects, including the Strada 1200, which is currently built out, the Harvest and Apartments, which is currently under construction, as well as the Pony Express Senior Housing that is currently under construction. Other areas that included recent approvals include the Peabody Apartments, which is 120 units for market rate. And here we are adding to the transit-rich development of the Allison Priority Development Area is the Allison Apartments. And there we have 187 units, which was the original proposal. And so now the applicant has come back for 135 units after their project revisions. Their site plan is still the same, still shows the same building footprint and parking. And you can see the future commercial slice that is extracted from this project area. So here's a little bit of information about the project comparison. You can see the categories in the first column and the original proposal, and then also in the third column, the revised, you can see the unit count dropping from 187 down to 135 units. That does influence the density, changing it from 70 units to 50 units per acre. The building height was also decreased from 70 feet to 60 feet, and parking was increased. The ratio more specifically was affected because of the unit count drop and the parking increase. It changed from .71 units or stalls per unit to 1.03 stalls per unit, so one parking stall per unit. Then common open space was increased by the addition of a rooftop terrace. There are still no changes to the balcony. The applicant's requesting no balconies for this project, and there's no changes to setbacks. So on to the graphics that depict the changes. You'll see on the left side of your screen the before that showed six stories and height of 70 feet. And then the after on the right side of the screen, the most notable changes is that it was reduced from six stories to four stories as fronting along Allison Drive. You can see just at the very top, there is a garden arbor that is part of the rooftop terrace, which we will show later on in the presentation. The next slide shows as viewed from the Transit Center. The delineation, the most notable delineation between these two exhibits is that again, on the left side of, or the west tower of this building, you can see that it changed from six stories down to four stories for that rooftop terrace. And then also on the eastern side of the project, that eastern tower changed from six stories to five stories, or 60 feet. So the the western tower is 50 feet and the eastern tower is 60 feet. Both reductions from the original 70-foot tall building. This is the view of the building as if it were viewed from Nuttree Parkway at that intersection of Allison Drive. So on here, we felt it necessary to discuss council's concerns that they talked about at the December meeting. And we'll start off with parking. During the meeting, City Council expressed concern about there wouldn't be sufficient parking. That would lead to other issues. That original project showed a .71 stalls per unit ratio that was being provided by the original project. Well, the way that the applicant has chosen to address that particular concern is by reducing the number of units and increasing the parking on the site. And that changes the ratio to 1.03, so one stall per unit. There was also another concern expressed by City Council about this being too large of a building for its location as compared to surrounding buildings such as the Harvest and Townhomes and the Strada Apartments. So the way that the applicant has chosen to address that is from its original 70-foot tall building, they've changed it as previously discussed in those other exhibits to 50 feet and 60 feet. So there's four stories for the building fronting along Allison Drive. And then there is six, there is five stories for the eastern portion that's closest to Harvest and Townhomes, as well as the Transit Center. That's at 60 feet. They also made some revisions to onsite amenities. The original calculation showed about 13,600 square feet worth of common open space provided for the residents. And they made a revision to the project that allows for rooftop terrace. You can see the graphics on the right side of the screen depict that terrace. There is a walkway that's being provided to the site that would provide for elevator service. And you can see there is going to be a seating area. This area amounts for, I think, 2,200 square feet. That's in addition to this project. Now, at this time, I think staff wants to bring up that we did notice that there was an error with the calculation for open space, common open space. The original staff report noted that 200 square feet per unit was a requirement for multifamily projects. That was incorrect. The correct calculation is 100 square feet per unit. So for every unit, the developer is required to provide 100 square feet of common open doors, outdoor space. What that amounts to is 13,500 square feet. And so with this addition of the rooftop terrace and the reduction of units, they are now meeting the standard by providing 15,800 square. There was also a concern expressed by City Council about not having balconies. The code says that for every unit, 50 square feet of balcony space needs to be provided, but as described in the previous Planning Commission and City Council reports, the applicant is requesting concession to this one. And so to address this particular issue that council noted, the applicant changed the floor plans to account for additional storage closets per unit. So each unit would be allowed, would be provided, one additional storage closet. And those storage closets would range from seven square feet to 21 square feet. There was also some concerns from council expressed about inclusionary zoning. The council wanted to limit the individuals who could lease from this facility to only people who worked or lived in Vacaville. And so staff and the applicant looked into that and determined that it would be in fact illegal to do something that strict. And so another issue associated with being that strict would eliminate the applicant from being able to obtain funding from the state because there are requirements from state funding that it be available to all individuals. But what the applicant is looking to do is address this particular concern in the DDLA by providing preferences for Vacaville residents. And if you're a Vacaville resident or you work in Vacaville, you would get preference over other individuals. This is being proposed to be addressed in the revised DDLA. The last of these concerns was trying to make sure that the applicant was identifying the various income levels and the units that would be dedicated to those income levels. And and this was, it wasn't very clear in the original staff report that staff provided, but the applicant was displaying that information. So we're calling it out a little bit clearer in this staff report that these are the income levels that are being proposed right now. And the number of units that would be dedicated to each of those. The city's area median income from 2019 was just shy of 88,000. And so each of these units would be dedicated to either 30%, 50%, 60%, or 80%. Overall, the project would not be able to exceed 80% of the area median income. Our discussion about exceptions and concessions is to review those original ones that have been discussed before Planning Commission and City Council. And we'll start with parking. The applicant is still needing to obtain concessions underneath the state's density bonus law. And the first one is for parking. The applicant's requesting to reduce parking standards from 212 stalls to 239 stalls. But again, referring back to what state law says about density bonus laws, if you have projects that meet density bonus law, you cannot require more than half a stall per unit or 68 stalls, but the applicant is providing one stall for each unit. The applicant's still asking for exceptions to setbacks related to side yard setbacks and rear yard setbacks. They would be meeting their front yard setback along Allison Drive. The original request for this project for 187 units did require an exception to that common open space for the project, but because they reduced the number of units and they increased the outdoor space for the project, the applicant no longer needs an exception to that particular standard. We noted that in the Planning Commission memo that was sent out today. The applicant's still asking for exception to private open space. That is that, that is for that balcony. They're asking to decrease the 50 square feet per balcony per unit down to none. They're asking to not provide any balconies. And then there's also a request for concession for building height to increase it from 48 feet to 60 feet, primarily for that eastern tower where there's five stories. Again, a reference to state law when it comes to this type of standard is that municipalities cannot limit the building height below 81 feet if the projects contain an affordable affordability component located next to major transit. Just a refresher on density bonus law, where it comes from and how is it influencing this project? It comes from California Government Code Section 65915. And what the state has dictated to municipalities is it says, "A city shall grant one density bonus with incentives or concessions, waivers or reductions or development standards, and parking ratios for projects containing affordable units." So for this project, for a project that contains 100% affordability and it's located within a half mile of a major transit stop, state law says you cannot impose a maximum density on it. And that the applicant will be allotted to four concessions or exceptions to standards and building height increase of three stories or 33 feet. Another component that is influencing this project is if a project contains 20% affordability and is also located within a half mile of major transit stop, municipalities cannot require parking beyond half a space per unit. And that, we talked about that earlier about being related to the concession. But again, this particular project contains 100% affordability and it is located within a half mile of a major transit stop. The city's intermodal station that is directly next door is that major transit stop. So a little refresher about what a major transit stop is. Well, that's defined under Public Resources Code Section 21155B and 21064.3. And there's three descriptions that are within that section. It says, "An existing rail or bus rapid transit center station ferry terminal served by either a bus or rail transit service, or the intersection of two or more major bus routes with a frequency of service interval of 15 minutes or less during the morning or afternoon peak commute periods." There's a little bit of information about this frequency of service. It depends on the regional area. The frequency of service varies between municipal, municipal areas. So your frequency of service for Sacramento is going to be different than Los Angeles, than the Bay Area, than San Diego. It's dependent on what your region is like. Each region is different. We're part of the Bay Area region. And so the main group that influences how transportation works within our area is MTC, ABAG, and STA. Metropolitan Transportation Commission, Association Bay Area Governments, Solano Transportation Authority. Those are free agencies that influence how transportation works within those areas. And what they found was that many north Bay Area counties cannot meet that specific requirement state law. And so the way that they look at this is, does that municipality contain the infrastructure that's necessary to eventually meet that particular standard? And what MTC, ABAG, and STA have determined is that this Vacaville intermodal station does contain that infrastructure and will eventually meet that particular standard. And so because of that, it gets that designation of a major transit stop. Eventually, as development occurs within this area, such as the Allison Apartments, and the project increases in density, that particular transit interval will also increase to eventually meet that standard. As part of our PC memo that was sent out today, staff noted a couple of changes to the conditions. There were specific project-specific conditions, number five, eight, and nine, that were related to a deed restriction, leasing incentive program, and then affordability summary. And talking with the housing authority, we determined that these particular topics will be covered and the disposition development and loan agreement that City Council will eventually make a decision on. And so as an effort to make sure that we're not going to conflict with that DDL document, we're recommending that we remove these conditions so that way that DDLA can stand on its own. It'll be the regulatory document that City Council eventually makes a decision on. A refresher on our Sequoia evaluation for this project. We are, we did evaluate that the original 2015 General Plan Environmental Impact Report, which was certified, did account for this project, and here's why. It's that original 2015 analyzed development within the Allison Business Area Policy Plan, which is the community plan, and that Allison Priority Development Area both accounted for in that original environmental impact report. So when you have a situation like that, the California Code of Regulation states that no environmental review shall be required if a project is consistent with a community plan, which is that Allison Business Area Policy Plan, the existing zoning, which it is, general plan policies, and that there are no peculiar issues to the site. And this particular project meets that criteria, and therefore, city, city staff is recommending to the Planning Commission that that they reaffirm the general plan of environmental impact. So in conclusion about this project, staff supports the revised project of 135 units because it meets the required findings. It complies with general plan, zoning and development standards as amended by the density bonus that's afforded to them in state law. It provides more affordable housing. It's a good design. It is located next to transit shopping and jobs, and also addresses a lot of this, it addresses City Council's concerns. So with that, staff has a recommendation for the Planning Commission to reaffirm the general plan EIR, and also to approve the density bonus, planning, planned development, and tentative parcel map request for the Allison Apartments located southeast quarter of Allison Drive and Nuttree Parkway. This is a recommendation that staff is having for Planning Commission that would be a recommendation to City Council. That concludes my presentation. The applicant also has a presentation when the commission is ready for that.
Thank you very much Albert. I'd like to pause briefly and give the other commission, give the commission a chance to pose any questions to Albert. So please, by all means, are there any questions for Albert? Commissioner Fortney, please.
Yeah, I'll defer to Wendy. I see her hand went up. I just wanted to let you know, I don't have any questions, but I want to circle back before we close with comments.
Okay. Thanks Mike.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Brecken.
Yeah, I just wanted to also thank Albert for the presentation. And I'm really glad about the changes in the projects, but I do have a number of questions. I'm not sure if they're for Albert. I'm not sure if they're for Albert or also for the developers. So maybe I should hold on until he gives his presentation.
Okay, are there any other questions from other commissioners for Albert's presentation? Okay, so seeing none, we'll go ahead and welcome the developer for his brief presentation.
Vice Chair Klein, thank you. My, my name's John Ciceronee and I'm here tonight on behalf of CFY Development and Eegis Group. And I would like to thank Albert for that very complete presentation. And I also wanted to thank the commissioners for your support last November and happy to be here with a new and improved project. Next slide, please. I'd like to just spend a moment talking about who we are and what we do and that we're affording affordable housing specialists. And we have projects up and down the state. I think the commissioners have seen this slide before. So I'd like to call attention to Kimmy's Place, which is the top picture. The one right below it is Globe Mills, which is where my partner Cyrus Hiosefi developed an iconic project by converting mills into into housing. And the picture on the left column below Globe Mills is our Harden, which is a transit oriented development project in downtown Sacramento and was one of the inspirations for Allison Place. I think the most important point to take from this slide is is not our experience in affordable housing, but we're the general contractor who builds our own projects. We're the property manager that manages our own projects. And most importantly, we're the general partners. We are the owners. We are your partners and your community, and we're here for the long haul. And next slide, please. We, we've won many national, regional, and local awards. Top picture is a picture of Bellevue. It's won an award for the best rehabilitation project in California. Right below it is our Canary Lofts right up the street in Davis. It won a prestigious Gold Nugget Award for Best Affordable Project in 2018 in the state and went on to be one of three national finalists. And the, the third picture on this slide is our Warehouse Artists Loft in Sacramento. And the only reason I want to call attention to this is it has no balconies. There's no private outdoor space. And yet this project won the prestigious Urban Land Institute Award for Healthy Places in 2015. And it's also a transit oriented development award. And it went on to win the best regional TOD project in Greater SAC in 2015. Next slide, please. Allison started a long time ago for me, back in 2019, when I became aware of the opportunity. And I think at that point, the city was looking at a lower density thirty unit to the acre project. And we thought that in this era where we're trying to get people to live closer to their daily destination, reduce commute times and things, it might be more appropriate to really do a transit oriented workforce development project. And we were inspired by the buildings that we've done in some other areas, like the Harden, RE Place, which we're building, and also the Wall. Next slide, please. So the, the first iteration of Allison was in 2019 where we, we had a three story building. And the problem with it was our funding gap, that we just couldn't close it. So by 2020, it solved the funding problem by increasing density. And that was the first application that we submitted to the city. And after many months of review, it was determined that by loading off of Transit Way, there was a real access issue. So the whole building was reconfigured and flipped to Allison Drive, which solved all the loading issues. And this was the building that the, the planning commission kindly approved to go to council in December. And as Albert pointed out, when we were at the council in December, there were a series of issues dealing with height, parking, amenities, storage, leasing preferences, and income targeting that we needed to address. Next slide. So we're here tonight with, with an improved project. We appreciate the tough discussions that we had regarding what we could do to solve those problems. As Albert pointed out, the building's gone from seventy feet. Its lowest point is now forty two feet, which is, which is adjacent to Allison. And then it steps up one whole level when you get closer to the shopping center. And I think what we've accomplished by doing that is not only lowering the building height, but we greatly reduced the massing of the building and we've improved the curb appeal from Allison. So you now have a more articulated facade from Allison, which steps up to the higher buildings appropriately placed adjacent to the commercial. Next slide, please. I think we, we've talked a lot about parking and the increase in parking spaces and the reduction in units has increased the ratio from point seven to almost one parking space per unit. And our investors and ourselves were very comfortable with a point seven because most of our other TOD communities are parked in the point six to point eight. We are providing a lot of bike parking. I think we've got a hundred and twenty six bike parking spaces and we're hoping to get more to try to encourage alternate means of transportation. We doubled the state mandate. And the most important point, the last point, is the hundred and thirty one tenant parking spaces, which are going to be gated. And we have a management plan and we allocate the parking spaces. So from our perspective, not only have we solved the parking problem, but if there ever is one, which there won't be, it's really a leasing issue for me. It's not a parking issue for the city. Next slide. I wanted to spend time talking about our amenity package because for a project like Allison, it is robust. We have as many amenities at Allison as I have at my Canary project, which won best affordable project in California. It's going to be a non-smoking building. We have a little exterior smoking shelter in the corner. We have an outdoor lounge area. And what I've tried to do here is give you some representative pictures from our other projects. The outdoor lounge picture is from Davis. We're going to have a tot lot for kids from two through twelve. It's a picture from our Truckee Artist Loft tot lot. It's on a little terrace. We're going to have a hoops court for teenagers so that we address all the different age groups and you have various activities that they require. That's a picture from our basketball court up at Summer Park. And I'd also like to stress the interior amenities in the building. We've got a community room, a social services room, a fitness room. And it's our intention to try to amenitize a little bit of the outdoor space as well adjacent to those rooms. And the lower picture of the slide is from our Mantica Juniper Apartments. That's one of the fitness rooms that we have at Juniper. Next slide, please. So not only do we have an existing robust amenity package, but we've improved it with the roof terrace. And in the projects that have roof terraces, this is by far and away the most popular amenity in the building. It's where people tend to congregate and gather. And, and we're happy to include this and really look forward to building it. We've sized the roof terrace similar to the size of the roof terrace at our Wall project in Sacramento, which you see in the lower right hand corner. I think in addition, council was concerned about personal storage and we found a way to provide a personal closet in the hallways outside of each unit. They're going to range from seven to twenty square feet each. And it's a total of about over two thousand square feet of storage. Next slide. To address the, the city's concern about leasing to tenants with a tie to the Vacaville community, we've proposed including an incentive program where we give preferences to applicants who have a tie to the Vacaville community. This is something that we've done in two prior projects, the Canary Lofts project in Davis and at our Truckee Artist Loft project up in Truckee. And the form that you see in this slide on the left is the incentive program that we used at TALL. TALL is an artist community. We wanted to lease to the artists. And so we quantified our policy by assigning scores to the various preference categories. And those applicants with the highest scores were given preferences in leasing. And we were able to satisfy the fair housing laws, yet still, still address the concern about leasing to people with a tie to the community. So we would propose doing something similar here. We haven't defined what those incentives would be yet. We will do that pre-leasing. But the amendments to the DDA, which the council will here, will include language that obligates us to do that and to submit it to the city for pre-approval. Next slide, please. With regards to deeper, deeper income targeting, we're, we're able to achieve that too. On, on the left, you see the old income targeting and on the right, you see the new. And what we're doing is proposing to increase the number of units that are in the lowest income category, the thirty percent. Now, the, the way Allison is going to work is it's actually applying as an IRS average income test set aside. So I'm getting into a little bit of the details here. But what it really means is that the building is going to average about fifty percent income throughout its life. And there may be some small variation in the AMIs that are allocated to each unit to achieve that. And when we lower the income on a project like Allison, lowering the revenue reduces our ability to service debt. And somehow we have to make that up. And one of the requests to the city is to help us with some project based vouchers. And that's another consideration that will be brought to the council at a later period, hopefully later this month. And, and with that, we think we're going to have a successful project. Next slide, please. The goal then is to hit a February 2022 financing application with Cal HFA. And if we do that, we expect to have the financing awards. Cal HFA is the first step. SIDLAC and CTAC is the second step sometime in the second quarter of 2022. And if we're successful in winning the awards, by the fourth quarter of 2022, we should have closed the financing, pulled permits, and started construction. It'll take us about two years to build and we'd hope to be leasing sometime in 2025. And that concludes my presentation. I would ask for your support now, as you did in November. Please remember the memo to council addressing the deletion of the three conditions. And I am here together with Alan Haddix, our civil, and Mal Montoya, my architect, to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ciceronee. And I, I would like to, Albert, I, I do have a question for you, if it's all right. So Public Resources Code fifteen, one, eighty-three references significant effects that, that might be peculiar to the site. And that, that's what you're, you're asking us to, to affirm the consistency with, with the plan and the zoning under Sequa. But my, my, my question here is whether or not there are peculiar, i- is there anything peculiar to the site or the project that was studied by the city prior to, or at, at the initial stage or in the EIR that would be relevant to this project?
No, there, there isn't anything that's peculiar to the site. So an example of something that might be odd would be if this site had been used as a source of storage for toxic contaminants. And it's listed on the state's Cortezia list as being one of those sites. And, and there needs to be extensive remediation to remove any of the pollution that's on the site. So that'd be an example of a peculiar situation. In our review of the original General Plan Environmental Impact Report and then the technical studies that were included in the original planning commission staff report from November, we didn't find anything that was peculiar, that was odd about the site that needed further evaluation. But the general plan itself had already considered those evaluations, such as noise impacts and such as impacts to the city's water system. That, you know, the, the city's existing infrastructure is already designed to accommodate development just like this.
And thank you, Albert. I, I am curious though, because this is a, a housing project that will result in more people at that site coming and going. So the thing that's unique about Vacaville is that there's a major freeway that bifurcates the both sides of the town, correct?
Correct, yes.
So I, I think that something about this project is that it, it is right on one of three major ways to cross the freeway. And that, that, you know, Vacaville, I think is, is maybe unique in that way. I, I don't know if we're one of the only, I'm sure there are other towns or sides that, that have a limited, limited ways to cross the freeway. But here, it seems like there's already quite a bit of traffic. And was there any study about the traffic impacts about putting a, a major housing development right at one of the, the, one of the, probably the main way that people cross the other side of town?
Yes, it was looked at. The city has a number of engineers that are licensed that look at traffic patterns and that look at the current city infrastructure and its eventual build out. And those engineers evaluated the expected peak hours of transport from this location and from the number of units and determined that the existing infrastructure for Allison Drive and Nuttree Parkway and Ulaas Drive, although all those are designed to, all those are designed currently as is to be able to accommodate the additional traffic associated with this project.
Was it studied in the initial, in the 2015 EIR or is that more recent?
Well, development at the site was anticipated and, and evaluated as part of the environmental impact report. The eventual, the, the eventual analysis that's associated with the environmental impact report accounts for what the city needs to do in order to be able to anticipate future growth within the city. And a lot of those future growth areas are in the northeast sector and also in the East Allee Town area. But the evaluation from 2015 also accounted for infill sites such as this one and analyzed, you know, the maximum number of potential that could be developed. And, and based off of that, those environmental documents contain recommendations on how to improve those things. In this particular area, there wasn't any need to say widen the roads, change the way that the traffic lights work or add additional lanes. None of that was necessary in order to be able to accommodate this project.
Okay, so this, that thing will change with the existing city transit pattern or, or the way, with the city currently manages traffic and transportation in, in that sector. Things are going to be the same after this project gets built?
No additional infrastructure is necessary. No additional lanes, no additional turn signals are necessary to be able to accommodate this project.
Will there be an impact at all from this project?
There would be no significant impact. There is, the project itself will increase the amount of traffic in nature because of the number of units that are, that will be deposited on this location. But again, the existing city infrastructure, the width of Allison Drive and, and the volumes that it's designed to accommodate, that we would, that the city would still continue to meet its necessary quality of traffic along those roadways with the addition of this project.
That, that sounds like you're, you're channeling LOS. Is, is that what I hear?
Correct, yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that indulgence. I'll open it up to the commission for questions of Albert or the applicant. Let's see, Commissioner Bricken?
Hi, thank you. I just, I wanted to ask the developer. There was one slide where he talked about loading. And I was hoping that we can go back to that slide and he can explain more, more fully what that was about and maybe how the traffic patterns go into and out of the building complex.
Thank you. This is John Ciceronee. Could the moderator please bring up the slide?
John, what slide was that one on?
Albert, please, it's towards the middle of the presentation, probably around page five or six. Thank you, that's the slide, Albert. Thank you, Commissioner. The upper right hand picture shows the first building that we submitted to the city departments, our first formal application. And the project was a hundred and sixty seven units and it was on a portion of the land that was strictly adjacent, adjacent to the commercial shopping center. And it was accessed by driving down Transit Way and then making a left into the apartment building. And there were issues associated with the, the parking in the transit station. And there were even more complicated emergency vehicle access issues with that design. And there were even more complicated emergency vehicle access issues with that design. And after several months of consideration, uh the revised design is what's shown in the lower-left corner. And this was the design that the commission heard in November. And it's the the same circulation patterns that we're proposing in the current design. The red arrows indicate that it's a right turn into the building from Allison and it's an exit via a left turn. And then the actual parking, which is not shown here, is underneath the podium and it's accessed through a a gate uh which is on the western side of the building. I don't have any arrows showing you, but the emergency vehicle access points are are through uh Transit Way and there are two of them. Um one towards the northern end of the building and one towards the southern end of the building. And that's how we've, we proposed and resolved the various traffic issues.
Okay, so during um peak commute hours, um like, have you evaluated or has Albert evaluated um what the impact would be like as far as, you know, the amount of slowing down on Allison?
If you're asking if I've done a traffic study, I I I have not. No, simply as Albert's indicated, uh it it was studied by the city and determined that Allison, as designed, can hold the loading patterns of the building.
That's correct, John.
Okay, thank you. Um so a- another, to to pivot into another area. Um this is a high-density project still, even though it's less than what it was before. Um and I understand that there's certain designs that could be used to increase security and safety. Um so I was just wondering what kind of security components are in this, in the building as designed now. Um, you know, maybe things to, i- it it sounds like the, you know, the rooftop took it and encouraged socializing, but, you know, cameras, um things like that. Um maybe shrubbery, what what is, what is, what thought has been put into the security?
It it'll be a gated, for for the parking, it'll be a gated access. In terms of the security in the building, we do keep a lot, what we call a locked environment on the buildings, which is usually some type of a key fob security access. Uh it does vary from building to building, but they are secured facilities and we have video facilities in each of the corridors, the elevators, the common spaces uh which are, which are recorded and et cetera and used for security purposes. So it is a secure environment. We we care nothing more than the safety of our tenants.
Okay, um. So I I noticed the rooftop access is just one of the towers. I think the West Tower.
No, it's actually, Albert, could you go down a couple of slides, please? Thank you. So the the, one of the reasons the rooftop works for us, and if you focus on the picture in the upper-left corner, that the long walkway is coming from an elevator in the, I'll call it the central residential tower. And that addresses the American Disability Act and ADA access for for potential users, wheelchairs, et cetera. Uh on the right, in the upper right-hand corner of that picture, you see a stair tower. So we have one stair tower for pedestrian access. Um and in the lower left-hand corner, there's a stack, a second stair tower uh that comes up. So there's actually two stairs plus one elevator accessing the roof terrace.
Okay, um is is there any reason why a community garden couldn't be put up there on the roof as well as sort of a you know, ongoing project that tenants could, you know, belong to a community um garden club or whatever, so and they can, you know, have fresh vegetables and what have you?
You know, Commissioner, it's it's a great question. And you see that picture on the right with wall and you see all the greenery? That actually is a community garden and it's it's patronized and it's maintained by the tenants. So I, we're not at all opposed to it, but it's something that, it's really communal in nature. And we let ourselves, when it comes time to program, it kind of look to the residents to determine whether it'd be appropriate or not.
Okay, so I guess I would look to Albert to see if this is something that could be like a condition um like of maybe some kind of requirement to bring this up to the tenants for a vote or something like that, so that it'd be raised to the tenants.
Yeah, but what what they give up, Commissioner, is it's a trade-off between lounge space, barbecue, cooking facilities. There's, there's a, there's a trade-off there.
Okay, and and why is there not rooftop terrace on the other um tower?
But you, Commissioner, that's another great question and we sized it primarily based on our experience in other buildings and given the size of the community and and the space that that we felt was appropriate for it. Uh I think another consideration aside from the space that it's, this is really sufficient to serve the community also has to do with cost. And the major elements that you get into when you start talking about the other towers, one of the reasons this worked is because of the elevator access. That if we were to try to program um the the other building, uh we would run into much greater expense in not only having to raise stair towers, but having to bring an elevator up. Uh if if that doesn't answer your question, um there's also uh a further complication dealing with building type and construction that I could ask Mal, my architect, to address if you need it.
Um sure.
Yeah, this is Malmon, Malmon's way to BSB. So when you have a a a rooftop terrace like that, the occupancy classification that the California Building Code applies maxes us out at four stories. So we were, we would not be able to provide this, the size needed on that upper roof and still meet the building code. And that is why we, one of the advantages in lowering the floor on this, this other wing here uh that you're seeing in the in the photos there on the slide uh allows us to provide that rooftop amenity space with this type of construction.
Thank you. Um another issue, if I can keep going, is um storage. Um which I I was really happy to see you added some storage to um the, I guess, the hallways of, you know, each of the apartments and um there's a hundred and twenty-six spaces for bikes, but I I just wanted to know how much um like, would a bike fit into, like, if you had a real expensive bike, would it fit into the storage space in any of those apartments? Um would Hot Wheels or, you know, the normal thing, you know, for kids, the bit, those big trikes, would they fit in those storage spaces?
Uh this is John Cicceroni, Commissioner. Uh the bikes would not fit, no, I don't think. The intention with the bikes is for us to provide the bike parking. Uh and I think we currently have a hundred and twenty-six bike parking spaces and we're trying to create more so that there is bike parking at least one-to-one. Uh the the size of the closets range from seven square feet to twenty square feet. Uh if Hot Wheels or the three-wheel plastic tricycles that were the Hot Wheels in my generation, I think those might fit in the bigger closets, but probably not the smaller ones.
Okay, um and there was no other um way to expand the storage? So that you avoid sort of, you know, littering the open spaces with um kids' toys and such?
I I, I think we've we've come up with a program that that should address the personal storage requirements uh of of the units, that there is storage within the units themselves if you, and I think that's visible in the unit floor plans. So if you're asking me, do we think we have adequate storage, the answer is absolutely.
Okay, thank you. I I, that's, that's my questions for now. I may have some more later. I'll let somebody else ask questions.
Sure, I I want to give everyone time. Um and, you know, if if it's all right, I'll just kind of go through a roll call here and make sure all the commissioners um get a chance. Um next on my list would be Commissioner Fortney and then I'll go to Lightfoot.
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair. No questions this evening. I do have a couple of comments, though, that I can throw out there before we dismiss this um project. John, you and CFY brought us a, in my opinion, a good project. Last time it was before us. You presented to the council, you had some pretty tough marching orders to make some changes. Kudos to you and staff because I feel you really listened to their input and made the adjustments and covered almost all of their concerns to bring us now this evening to a really good project. Um I think the real benefactors will be the hundred and thirty-four individuals and families that'll get to call this place home with a rooftop terrace. Of the changes that you made, there was one specifically that I wanted to call out. And that was your leasing preferences, that incentive program. That was big for me and I know a couple of council members mentioned it as well. And I know we were on the border of, you know, the Fair Housing Practice Act violating some things there. So I'm really encouraged and really happy to see this. And the reason I wanted to call it out is because I'm hoping as a commission, we see this and that this becomes a template or standard language in the DDA for all affordable housing projects going forward here in Vacaville. So thank you for your time there.
Thank you, Mike. Um Commissioner Lightfoot, any questions for the applicant?
Thank you. I want to echo uh mostly what every, what Commissioner Forney said. I agree with all of his points. Um I too uh think that, you know, this is filling a a segment in our housing in Vacaville that um we need and um this project meets all the acquire, requirements and um what you've brought before us is even better than the last. My, my only um question that I'd like to pose to um the other commissioners, I'd like to hear what people's thoughts are on the removal of the deed restriction from the, what we're going to be approving. And maybe a remedy is um adding language that though the deed restriction in this package or what we're approving tonight um could be removed when it's addressed in the um loan agreement.
Um, okay, so I want to make sure that I, I I'm, I'm, I'm not missing anything. So your question, your question for the other commissioners and maybe this is something we can work out when we close public hearing is is around the removal of the deed restriction. Is that, did I, did I get you right there, Ralph?
Correct. Maybe we need the input from um staff on how uh we can remedy that, making sure it's, you know, included in the next um the council's address to this item.
So what I'm going to recommend is that we um put a pin in that until we get to um commission deliberation at the close of public hearing. Does that work for you, Ralph?
Yep, of course. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Um, you know, um I'm gonna move on to Commissioner Beaumont and then Commissioner Aldrich for questions of the applicant.
Thanks, Vice Chair. I just have a couple of comments. Uh first off, I'm really glad that the city council brought this back to us. Uh we had some serious discussions when it was before us and I thought the state exemptions were something you couldn't fight, but I learned that you can and I'm glad to know that now. Um I do have comments on the parking. I know John is very happy with the parking. But I'm looking at the Strata Apartments, the Harbison Apartments, these apartments to come, that's five hundred and forty units within a half a mile with no controlled overflow of cars. And the only places I can think that anybody that has extra cars and no parking is going to go is the Ullatus Center or the Shopping Center. So that still concerns me. Uh the building itself, I think, is uh much softer than it was. It looked like an urban project to start with and now it looks much nicer. I I appreciate that and it a much nicer, easier sell to me. Uh my only question, I know we divided the three-point-six-five acres into two parcels. And I wondered, did the city do that or was it a combination of the developer and the city? Because I feel like we took some of that point-nine-seven commercial acre site and we could have used it for this project to make it a much nicer project for parking and outdoor amenities. So does, is that a city thing?
And it sounds like this is a question for Albert. Are are you able to speak to that, Mr. Inall?
Yeah, yeah. So i- it's an easy answer. It's a city council vision answer. Is that city council envisioned this area to be a mixed-use project and that's what was intended on this project. And the formula for achieving that would have been to provide one project that contains commercial and residential or to dissect the property to provide one component residential, one component commercial. And so building over that com- future commercial site to provide additional parking would just be contradictory to what city council envisioned for that area. And so this is the workaround around that is to provide a portion of it for residential and then remain the rest for a future commercial development.
Okay, I just disagree. I think it would have been nicer with a little more area for the outdoor amenities and the parking itself. But other than that, uh I I think it's done a nice job and I think it will provide something that the city needs and as far as housing goes. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Doug. Uh Commissioner Aldrich, any questions for the applicant?
I really don't have any questions. And when you are the last speaker and you're the last speaker, most of fellow commissioners have said what I was going to say. I love the revisions to this. Um namely, the parking, uh one parking place per unit, I think, is going to be pretty adequate for the income of these units. Um I like the open space and I think the rooftop amenity is very special. Um I wish, I lived in a community with a rooftop recreation area. I like to get up high and look out. Um I think I think the staff did an ama- amazing job on the study and getting it all put together, Albert and your staff. Thank you for that. Um I don't exactly have any questions at this time. I'm quite pleased with with the way it's set up and the way it looked and I'm just going to leave it at that.
Thank you, Jan. Um I I do see we have a hand up uh from the developer. Um John, was that, uh, did you have questions or was there a comment?
Vice Chair, th- thank you. Um I I did want to a- address Commissioner Lightfoot's comment about the deed restriction. And I'd I'd like to draw attention to that and I'd like to explain the sequence of our financing and why it's so important that we do not have a deed restriction. The complexities in financing what is approximately a sixty-three million dollar project, uh there are plenty of them. And one of the most important items is the intercreditor and subordination agreements which occur among the various elements that finance it. There are the investment groups that are probably going to be putting in about thirty-four, thirty-five million. Uh there's the lending group that's going to be putting in a little over fourteen million and then there are the city documents themselves. And they all interact and they all have different priorities. And what happens when, when we have deed restrictions, which are covenants that run with the land, is it becomes extremely complicated, if not impossible, to resolve those and to do what the lenders and financiers need. So when affordable housing projects are financed, the sequence is that we get the entitlements approved, which is what we're doing tonight and then what the city would do. And in parallel with that, we get the financing documents approved, which is what the development and disposition agreement is that the council approves and the companion documents to the DDA which include a regulatory agreement. And it is that city regulatory agreement, which is what will memorialize the covenants that we commit to for affi- for affordability and the deed restrictions. And it is recorded contemporaneously with our purchase of the land from the city and the start of the construction. Therefore, there is no amendment that's necessary to the planning conditions. And if one of those restrictions were to occur in the covenants that run with the land through the planning restrictions, you really may preclude us from financing the project. It is that serious and significant of an issue. So I would please ask the commission to accept staff's memo and let the housing authority documents control. We're going to deliver the project that we promised. We've got a golden track record doing that and it's going to be a building you'll be tremendously proud of. Thank you.
Thank you, John. I'm sure that's not the last thing we'll hear from you. Um I, okay, Commissioner Lightfoot, please.
Um Director Morris, could you think you could comment on this um for us? Give us a little insight. My only hang-up on a reason for addressing this and bringing this up. This was um first presented in our packet and uh we were Brought forward with these um, or these amendments were brought forward to us. Um, this evening prior to the meeting and they are, these are heavy languages. Um, Mr. Cicerone has addressed. And I just want to make sure that city's on board with removing these and giving us some, give us some insight on. Um, the dealings and having these included in the original packet and now removed.
Uh, thank you very much, Commissioner Lightfoot. Uh, this is Erin Morris, Director of Community Development, and I'll start and Emily Cantu, the Director of Housing, may want to add my response, but. Yes, um, I understand the concern about why are these conditions being removed from the planning approvals? The simple answer is that the regulatory agreement that the city council is in charge of. Will speak to all these issues to assure specific levels of affordability. And um, the developers told us it is problematic to have similar but slightly different language in our planning approvals, so we're. We're recommending, really strongly recommending the commission support the removal of those conditions. With the assurance from me and, and in our record that the council will in fact control. The level of affordability, the deed restriction requirement, et cetera. And actually, the amended DDA is something that will be at council with this project that you're all reviewing this evening, so it will all be. Tied up in one faithful evening, hopefully. I hope that answers your question. Emily Cantu could add, maybe could add something if there's any further question.
Yes, thank you. This is Emily Cantu, the Housing and Community Services Director. I think the only thing that I um, would add to Erin's comments, um, which I agree with. Is that uh, the city is the owner of the land at this point in time and uh, John mentioned that, Mr. Cicerone. The city, per the documents that the council will um, review and um, consider approving with the entitlements if, if approved or with the. Whatever the planning commission's recommendation is this evening. They will state that the, the city is not going to transfer ownership of the property. Without the leasing preference, the affordability and the affordability restriction. So um, it's just, it's not going to happen. And the developer knows that and um, the documents will state that, that we agree to. So that's where the kind of full assurance comes in.
Thank you, Ms. Cantu. I just want to speak a little more directly to um, Commissioner Lightfoot's question. Is, is there a reason that it was sort of a last-minute change that we received um? You know, in the second round of approving this project?
Um, this is Director Morris. Um, I'll speak to this. Um, as we brought this item together. Under fairly tense timeframes because the council asked to see it again and we're trying to get it before them before the end of this month. Uh, planning was putting together conditions, packaging it up, and we received feedback from the developer who had reviewed the conditions. As recently as yesterday or Friday, that they had concerns about the, the conditions in the planning approvals being at odds with what the council is going to be considering, so. It came to you late following a holiday weekend, um, probably in part because we're all moving very quickly trying to keep this project um. Alive so that the council can consider it on January thirty-first.
Commissioner Lightfoot, is that, is that helpful?
Thank you. I really appreciate your, but and I'm, if. I'm following your recommendation that this is going to be taken care of and I appreciate your um, explanation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ralph. I, I'd like, I now like to open up um, public comment on the uh, on the public hearing. We have any comment from our attendees or other panelists?
There are no attendees raising their hand.
Thanks for that. Um, so we'll go ahead and close public comment and I want to make sure, um, yeah, so I'll, I'll go ahead and. Close public comment and we'll now begin uh, commission deliberations. Um. Wh- uh, but I, I'm gonna add, you know, one, one thing that I, I had questions about was uh, the inclusionary zoning piece. And uh, this may, might be more of a question for staff. Um. How, how do preferences differ from inclusionary zoning? And why would preferences be acceptable but uh, inclusionary zoning is not? So I, I'm just going to throw that out there. Does anybody want to take that question?
This is Emily Cantu. Um, I think I can take that question. Thank you very, very much for uh, checking in on that. So uh, the preferences. Allows, let's say no, um, you ha- you open up your application process, you get all of your applications in. And you start leasing to people who have preferences. If your application pool, you run out of people with preferences, you can still lease to people who don't have preferences. So you're not excluding the general public, which is not allowed under the fair state and federal fair housing laws. So you have a preference, so you can serve those folks first. Um, but it doesn't um, close the door to everybody else completely, which is not legal.
I, I don't know if that's what the uh, wh- what anyone had contemplated with this question. Um. It, so is, is, are you saying inclusionary zoning is illegal?
No, not inclusionary zoning. I apologize. I, I thought you meant um. Regarding the leasing preference versus only allowing Vacaville residents, so I may have answered the wrong question and my apologies.
Uh, Vice Chair Klein, if I may, this is Director Morris. Uh, inclusionary zoning is a practice that some cities have where it's required that all residential development. Um, include a portion of the units deed restricted for affordable, to, to housing for, it's affordable. Um, that's not what this project is. This project is one hundred percent affordable housing project. The question that came up at council was can. The leasing of these units be limited to Vacaville residents and the answer is no. That's not legal, but what is legal is setting up this preference system that um, the developer described at the meeting. Inclusionary zoning is an entirely different thing. That's not part of this project or it's not a requirement in City of Vacaville either.
I think that that's what council had um. From listening to the comments at council, I thought I had heard inclusionary zoning, so I'm glad that we got to air that out. Uh, thank you very much, Erin. Um, so now I'll, I'll start with Commissioner Brecken and then from there I will go to Commissioner Fortney. Uh, for uh, comments, deliberation.
Um, yeah, I, I'm, was reading the, there was a letter um, sent to the whole planning commission. By one of the owners of Vacaville Commons, which is um, I guess the shopping center um, right nearby. The project and um. She made a point that the basketball area would be very noisy and it would be more appropriate in a park. Um. And uh, she wanted to use the open space nearby, I think for a park, but. I mean, that leads up to the question of there are other city-owned properties. Um. In the surrounding area that could be used as a park, I think near U-Lattice. And um. I guess I wanted to ask um, Erin Morris what um. What steps can be taken or are being taken to maybe take a look at nearby areas since we are, it's, as Ed Sted, Beaumont said. Not only is, you know, parking impacted by all the surrounding apartments, including this one. But also open space issues are, are a huge deal. We, we are saying that. Um, this apartment complex would be using um, Hawkins Park, which is already a neighborhood. Park um, being fully used by. A, a neighborhood, another neighborhood. So we need a neighborhood park for um, these apartments and uh, so I guess I'll, I'll ask um, Director Morris this question.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Brecken. Uh, this is Erin Morris. Uh, this is an issue that came up at the council meeting and it's something that staff is in sort of the early time of exploring. I mean, factually, the city owns land in this Allison PDA. And we own some land that's not being actively used for anything. Uh, so it's something we're looking at, but it's not. Necessarily something, it is, it's, the idea is, is germinating out of this project, but it's not going to be a requirement of this project. So I guess I would say the basketball court issue is kind of this example of. This project needs to provide amenities for its residents and then this project, when it's operated by this developer, needs to make sure that if there are issues with the hours. That the, the kids are using the basketball courts or disturbing their residents, that they're able to address that. And that's kind of a typical way these multifamily projects have to be managed. But yes, the park idea uh, came up at council. There is some exploration happening on it. Um, and so um, we hope to have. Uh, further updates on that topic as we work on it.
Uh, thank you. Yeah, and I think right now there is a lot of funding that could be available, especially if we have affordable housing. Um, in the area. Um, as far as. Um, the basketball court, I just wanted to ask the developer. Um. How he came up with or how they came up with the basketball court idea, if that is the best. Use of um, the recreational space that they have as far as. Um, it's, is it limited to, you know, certain age groups and will it be noisy and will the um, neighbors be objecting or there, you know, less noisy? Things to do or is this the best use of that space?
Commissioner John, John Cicerone addressing the question. Thank you. Uh. We have obligations from the California Tax Credit Allocation Committee and the. The California Debt Limit Allocation Committee to provide amenities to residents and they stipulate that we have to provide amenities for. Kids in the two through twelve and teenagers. And uh, our, our thought is that the basketball court would address the teenagers. Uh, with regards to management, uh, we have other basketball courts. We limit the hours. Uh, we do have twenty-four, seven onsite management. Uh, and I do think that we can manage the use of the recreational facilities and it, it's just not the basketball court that generates noise. If anybody's been to a playground and heard the kids, that they can make much more noise than teenagers. Uh, and I do think we can manage the amenities in our project so that they're not a disruption of the commercial centers.
Okay, thank you. Also, um, this same person asked about a computer area for the kids so that. They might have a center where they can do their homework or what have you.
Thanks. Um, this is Commissioner, if that was addressed to me, John Cicerone, again, we. Uh, without necessarily taking the time to go back to the presentation and, and your staff um, report in the package, if you look at the floor plan. And one of the slides addressed this, we have an interior community facility as well situated on the second level. And one of the services that we provide our tenants at no charge to the tenants or social services. And we envision contracting with a company called Life Steps to provide those. And Life Steps um, uses portions of the community room as a social center. And once the community is open, Life Steps meets with the various tenants to address what social services would best meet the tenant needs. And you have to remember that this is a workforce-oriented project. It's not a family project. So yes, there would be kids, but we don't necessarily envision it being a family project. Um, but to the extent that there is a large child population, uh, there would be services to address whatever needs they have.
Thank you. Um. Yeah, I, I maintain concerns about the parking um, overflowing. Into either the transit area or the Vacaville Commons. Um. I also have um, open space issues. Um. I think the developers done what they can with this space, but um, it seems like we really are deficient in park space. Um, for this area. So um. I'm open to hearing from other um, commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. I'll now turn to Commissioner Fortney.
Thanks, Vice Chair. No, no questions. The presentation was solid and, and impactful. I just want to reiterate that this is a big opportunity for Vacaville, over a hundred units of low-income housing. And while parking is an issue and may be an issue, it may not be an issue. Um. If every unit has parking, we're good there. And the incentive is, is that public transportation is in walking distance for those families that don't have a vehicle. They have access to a library to walk to. Yes, open space would be great, but we have to remember that the, almost the one acre future commercial site. Could have been incorporated into this. This was not our call. This was city council's goal was to keep that reserved for future commercial. Now, the City of Vacaville does those place right next to the U-Lattice Community Center. That could be an opportunity. But these residents will have access to shopping. Uh, live entertainment in the theater, the, the library, there, there are so many amenities that it makes sense to put the high-density housing here. And the pluses definitely will outweigh the negatives. Again, over a hundred units. For low-income families and the preferences in the application process means. Our Vacaville families get an opportunity or rate higher or score higher in this report card date or so. To move into this project first, or those that do not live in Vacaville that drive to Vacaville to work now have an opportunity to move to Vacaville that they. Probably could never have had that opportunity before because they didn't, or couldn't find anything in their income. To pay for rent, so now we're giving those individuals an opportunity to live closer to where they work and that may change their, their lives, so. Um. I'm completely on board. I think this is a great project. Could there be a lot more to it? Absolutely. As we get to deal with more affordable projects, we'll. Understand that there's no prevailing wage here. I would encourage city council to probably have that discussion again, that all affordable housing projects. That have any subsidy um, of public fund be required. To uh, be prevailing wage, but I think this is a good start for Vacaville and I'm completely on board with this project. Thanks, Vice Chair.
Thank you very much, Mike, and I'm taking note of your recommendation to council about prevailing wage. Um, a- and I'm going to ask uh, City Attorney Borba. Uh, is, so um, given um. Uh, Mike's comments about prevailing wage, is there a way for us to send that recommendation to council? For future consideration or, or is that inappropriate? As a legal matter?
Um, and I, I'll answer, but I also want to defer to Emily. She has additional detail. These are terms and conditions that are part of the development agreement. And at this point, um, that is not within the planning commission's jurisdiction. Emily, did you want to add anything to that?
Uh. Let's see. Thank you for um, giving me an opportunity, Andrea. I appreciate it and thank you for the question. Um. There are exceptions in the prevailing wage law that, for affordable housing and um, part of that reason is um, you know, it, it does cost more. Um, I do think the council could um, consider, of course, your comments and see if they wanted to take it up as an item. So I, I think you might be able to include it in your council or, excuse me, your commission comments this evening. Um, but I'd have to refer to Erin for that.
Uh, this is, this is Erin, sorry. And, yeah.
Go ahead, Erin, please.
I just want to say we can note that this is a topic that the commission raised um, when we summarized this meeting. Uh, in the staff report that Albert will hopefully be writing tomorrow.
Okay, perfect. That's where we were going with this, so for future, for future discussion on future projects.
Yeah, I, I think Commissioner Fortney raises an excellent point and I, I think the mayor spoke forcefully about this. Uh, he speaks for all of Vacaville and I think it's important for us to um, uh, you know, pay attention to our jurisdiction, but. There are some issues that um, I, I think are worth uh, taking note of. Commissioner Fortney, did you have additional comments?
No, thank you. I'm good for the evening. Thank you, Vice Chair.
Thanks, Mike. Uh, Commissioner Lightfoot?
Thank you. No, I, I don't have any additional comments. All my uh, questions were answered and. I agree, this is a good project and um, much needed for our housing element for low-income housing and I think it's a great addition. Thank you.
Thank you, and um, Albert, I'll just note um, the comments that Commissioner Lightfoot made about the deed restriction, if you could also include uh, a. A note about that in your staff report, that might be helpful. I, I think he aired out some helpful issues that the council might also have questions about. Um, Commissioner Beaumont?
Uh, I gave some comments. Uh, I think no project is perfect. I think this project.
I think this project has definitely been improved and I appreciate what John has done to it. And I, I will recommend that we approve it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Doug. And Commissioner Aldrich.
Thank you. I agree that this is a, a great project for Vacaville. It's, it's very much needed. I think, well, I'd like to see it be the start of several others throughout the city. Perhaps this will pave the road for that to happen. And I'm definitely in favor.
Thank you, Commissioner Aldrich. Sorry you have to go last, but you're our most, you're our most senior member. So it's your, it's your prerogative.
Thank you very much for pointing that up.
Absolutely. I, I, I'll just add my comments that I, I think that this is not a perfect project. And I, I did get a chance to pay attention and, and I took note of all the issues that were raised at the council public hearing. I, I, I do have questions about the project design features that specifically incorporate crime-free design, I think is, is the, is, is what it's called. So I'm going to give, I'd like to give the, anyone that can, can just point us, give us a summary of some of the crime-free design project features so that we can air those issues out tonight. Commissioner Morris or, or Albert or John, if anyone wants to just give us the top three crime-free design features.
This is, oh, sorry.
This is Director Morris. We, we can do that. We're at the deliberations phase. So we're, the developer's technically not part of our public hearing, participating anymore. He's sort of waiting to see what happens.
Rookie mistake.
Yeah, it's okay. It's fine. If you'd like, Albert could give you a brief summary of that or, or we can move on. And either way is fine with us. We'll get an answer if you need one.
Albert, I didn't mean to, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you very much. So as the applicant, John Cicerone, had mentioned, there's a number of features that they're going to be incorporating into this project, including cameras, including cords, and making sure that the facility is constantly monitored. Another feature that the applicant is proposing to do is to have this place gated, that we, not every vehicle or individual from walking up the street that isn't part of this project can just walk on. That you, they have to be residents or have to know somebody to be able to come into this facility. That's another design feature. Another feature is that a lot of the amenities are located farther back from along the street. So that provides some protection for some of the toddlers or smaller kids that are, that are located within those play areas. Another design feature that is constantly considered when we're working with applicant and with our police department is to make sure that landscaping around the perimeter is dense enough to be able to provide for the site, but also allows for patrol cars or other emergency vehicles to be able to drive by and see through into the site. And that's why this perimeter fencing that's around the site doesn't consist of a solid design, but it's more of that tubular steel fence where if there is a, a situation on the site that you could have patrol cars come up and, and drive through, and there aren't going to be dense, dense bushes or shrubs that prevent people, prevent people from being able to see into the site. And then there's also the partnership that the developer will have with the city's police group and, and making sure that they're out at the site and they're aware of what's going on and, and they're connected with the management staff at this location. Then we also have a fire staff that, as they're looking at these things, they're making sure that the project itself is complying with the California Fire Code to make sure that if there is an emergency, that there are fire apparatus engines or ladders that can get around this building, drive around and, and get access to this facility. So those are just a handful of the type of safety considerations that the project will be implementing as part of its development.
Thank you, Albert. And I, I, I'm not asking these questions in vain. I, I have heard these issues from the council. And, and what I'm trying to do here is to set the staff up for a successful public hearing in front of city council. To the extent these things come up, I want you to be able to anticipate these questions. I know council is, is focused on crime prevention. And another question toward that end would be inclusionary zoning. We, we spoke a bit about that tonight and I, I don't think we need to go into it now. I, I believe that this is an issue where we might justify some future joint hearings or if the housing element committee can learn more about that topic. I think that there are questions that, where we might benefit from study sessions and becoming more aware as a council and, and planning commission about how we can make Vacaville residents more able to afford to live here. So I, I, I would also say that, and a question I have for you, Albert, is around school capacity. And I, and I just want to get this on the record. Did we ever receive any guarantees about capacity from a politically accountable person? Or someone that has agency authority to speak on behalf of the school district?
Well, the distinguishing feature about the representative that provided the comment to the city is an individual that is very aware of its facilities and its operations and its attendees and, and not somebody, you know, that is at a hearing. So our representative that is attending our meetings and commenting on these projects, fully aware of their capacity, capabilities. And they're the ones that are, are reviewing these projects and providing the comments. Now, the original project counted for 187 units. And at that time, the VUSD representative determined that there wasn't an issue, that there was existing capacity to contain that. Now, this project is less than that proposal. So there shouldn't be any concern about whether or not the project will be able to be served by the VUSD.
Thank you, Albert. And the only reason I'm, I'm asking this question is that the city council is our, is the city of Vacaville's highest legislative body. And they're politically accountable to their constituents. So as we're making recommendations to the city council, we want to make sure that we're, we're basing those recommendations on people who are similarly politically accountable. So if, in the future, I just want to say that it'd be great if, if we could get the politically accountable figures at the school district involved in the questions about school capacity, to the extent we're making recommendations to the council based on those recommendations. And I see, Doug, Commissioner Beaumont, do you, do you have a question?
No, I have a comment, Vice Chair, is I read that from Dan Bananowitz, the facilities in charge of Vacaville Unified School District. His response, and his response was there was enough school capacity on the eight, seven side of Vacaville. However, he couldn't guarantee that every school, every grade level would have an opening at like Cooper. There might be a third grade that was full and you might, if you have a third grader, you might have to go across town. That was his comment, was that there's a capacity enough, but couldn't guarantee grade levels at each level. That was my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that comment, Doug. And that, that really builds on what I'm, you know, my, my general concern here is we, we want to be in the habit of making recommendations to the council that are based on the, the best and highest opinion from the school district. And I, I think Dan is, is a terrific public servant. But I, I, I think if we're making recommendations to the council, we want to be basing that on people who are similarly politically accountable. And hopefully in the future, we, we can, we can get the, the, the school board and others with superintendent in the game of giving us an idea about capacity. That, that's, that's my, my primary concern here is that we need a coordinated, integrated city school solution for bigger projects. This is the biggest project that Vacaville has, it, it, it's mine, to my, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is the biggest project the city has built in a long time. So we, we want to be giving the people that live here the representation that they deserve at every level. So I don't think that's enough for me to vote no on the project, but I, I want to get that out there, that in, in the future, I really want to see the, the superintendent of schools or the school district trustees involved in, in, in these projects and, and giving us their reasoned opinion that they, they think that there's capacity. So with that, I would love to entertain a motion.
Commissioner Beaumont, I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second from Aldrich.
Jan's got it.
Okay, so I, moved by Doug and seconded by Jan. Can I, Nancy, can you give us a roll call vote?
Chair, just one second. Vice Chair, just one second. Just wanted to make sure that the commission is aware that as part of their motion, they're also going to be incorporating the removal of conditions five, eight, and nine.
I'll move as amended.
And I will second as amended.
Andrea, is there a problem with that?
No, no, Chair. That is fine.
Thank you. All right, Nancy.
Okay, thank you for the clarifications. Commissioners Aldrich.
Yes.
Beaumont.
Yes.
Brecken.
Yes.
Fortney.
Yeah.
Lightfoot.
Yes.
Vice Chair Klein.
Yes. Okay, so if, if it's okay with the group, I think, or with everyone, can we just take a five minute break, Nancy? To give people a, a chance to stretch their legs? And let's, let's be back at quarter up.
A break for five minutes.
Thank you, Vice Chair Klein.
Thank you. Okay, we'll now turn to the land use and development code item. We'll continue with our public hearings with item B. Is staff contact Christina Love on the line?
Excuse me, Vice Chair Klein. This is recording Clerk Tillitson. I suggest we do a roll call to make sure all commissioners are back with us.
Oh, very diligent, of course. Please, Nancy, do a roll call.
Vice Chair Klein.
Here.
Commissioners Aldrich.
Here.
Beaumont.
Here.
Brecken.
Here.
Fortney.
Here.
Lightfoot.
Here.
We can proceed with our meeting.
Thank you very much, Nancy. Is, do we have Ms. Love?
I am here.
Long time no see.
It's, yes, it's been a busy month. Well, welcome. Good evening, commissioners and vice chair. I am going to do my best to make a rather lengthy and kind of all encompassing and dull topic as in depth, but brief as possible. So here we go. Next slide, please. Introduce our, our project team. So this project, as was, you know, I, there was a rather lengthy timeline in the staff report of this project's been going on for some years now. Started off in two, 2018 or 19. Originally with Fred Budery, who has since retired. And so I am here to hopefully take this to the finish line. So I am the senior planner on the project. Paimon and Erin have both been vital in helping me both catch up, but also make sure everything stays on task with the project. And then our Lisa consulting, Lisa Weiss consulting folks are here, Roger and Mayha. They're both on the line and are available if there are any questions that are a little bit more in depth than I have been able to get to. I've been on this project since August, so they've been involved a little bit longer than I have. Next line, please. The land use and development code kind of is the overall guideline for how development occurs within and where in Vacaville. And the last code was updated back in 1997. So, and it's been updated off and on here and there through the course of the years. But really, the whole thing needed to be overhauled. And this was identified in the general plan as a major action and goal to bring the land use and development code to the current times. So the objectives and the purpose So the objectives and the purpose of the Land Use and Development Code update uh, was to make it consistent and with the general plan and to more specifically implement the general plan, especially where it comes to land use policies, land use designations, and really support mixed use development. Also promotes, uh, high-quality design through a more clear and much more effective regulation scheme. I'll kind of get into that a little bit more. It also provides clear, modern terms and definitions. Establishes clear permitting process with increasing efficiency and predictability, so kind of that streamlined process where projects comply with the Land Use and Development Code. Um, to make sure that it is consistent with state and federal law. Specifically where housing is involved, as we all know or have been made of familiar housing kind of changes on an annual basis. So we've, uh, updated some of the sections to uh, more generally refer to those, that changing venue. And then also to provide a more clear, concise, understandable, and easy-to-use land use and development code. It is rather lengthy. Uh, and so we wanted to make it more user-friendly. Next slide, please. Brief background, uh, from just the timeline, really. Uh, whereas, again, I said it started in two thousand eighteen, uh, and has gone all the way up through today. It has been kind of processed in three phases. The first being the audit, where Lisa Weiss, a consulting firm, spent some very in-depth hours combing through our current code, figuring out what doesn't really make sense with today's development, um, trends and where we can make it better. And then they came up with, they provided a very in-depth audit of of what can be improved on our current code. And then that implemented phase two, which was the beginning of that actual update. Uh, that, of course, took, as you can see, a good two years to get through, uh, to culminate in, um, what you see now, which is the final draft of the proposed Land Use and Development Update. And so now it brings us to phase three, which is where we are in the adoption phase. Next, please. Land Use and Development Code is more generally referred to in our Baccaville Municipal Code as Title fourteen. It does comprise of a number of divisions. Um, the list you see before you specifically are the divisions that we overhauled and updated. Uh, so part of the recommendation is that, uh, Planning Commission recommends City Council would repeal all of these current codes and replace it with the proposed development code that will, that you have, um, received in your packets and is online. Next slide, please. I will attempt to do a brief overview, uh, and this is, I followed, to make it a little bit easier, I followed the same format and structure generally as was in the staff report. Um, but just summarized it a little bit more. Next slide, please. So the first major piece, uh, that the audit, uh, identified and was implemented in the Land Use and Development Code was to significantly change the format and the structure of the overall code. Uh, then specifically, uh, decrease the amount of language. There's a lot of duplicative language, a lot of lengthy verbose language. Uh, and much of that was, uh, put into graphics and tables, which are way more easier to read and more easy to understand, uh, which then, of course, decrease that duplicative language. Uh, the majority of the work actually occurred in the zoning code, which is Division fourteen, or, yeah, Division fourteen point zero nine. Uh, most often what planners will rely on and Planning Commission relies on, uh, it is very, it's majority of the Land Use and Development Code, it's really long and it's not real user-friendly the way it currently is. Uh, so it's being proposed as basically dividing it into four basic parts. So anything that's related to administration and procedures is found in part one. Part two is the district regulations, so specific to residential district, commercial district, whatever the district is. The basic land uses and, um, basic, uh, design standards for those districts would be found in part two. Part three would be supplemental standards. And then part four is the land use and development permits, so the actual types of permits, whether it's a design review or a condition to use permit, what is involved and what the processes for those permits. Next slide, please. The zoning map is essentially a visual representation of the Land Use and Development Code. It's the visual component, uh, that identifies where the boundaries of the districts are. Part of the Land Use and Development Code does include renaming, uh, certain districts or maybe even getting rid of districts. An example would be the Commercial Service District. We don't have many of them currently in uh, those specific districts within our zone or within our city. But also many of the uses are more consistent with, say, general commercial. So instead of having so many different commercial districts, it's being proposed to get rid of and re-zone essentially any commercial service area as a general, possibly a general commercial type of district. That's just one example. Uh, now the zoning map itself has not been amended and it's not before you tonight, and that's in part because the Land Use and Development Code hasn't been reviewed and adopted. The, again, the zoning map is the representation of that Land Use and Development Code. So once we get approval, um, to move forward with the Land Use and Development Code, we begin the very quick and depth, in-depth process of updating zoning map. Um, and getting that before you to review as well. Go to the next slide, please. Here are some of the examples of what zones are being proposed to change. So Commercial Highway is currently not a land, a zoning designation, but it is a general plan land use designation. So there's a little bit of a disconnect between the general plan and the zoning. Uh, so part of this code update would be to get rid of that disconnect and make them more compatible and more, more like the same. Uh, it also renames or redefines Commercial Recreation into Parks and Recreation. Uh, would rename and redefine Community Facilities into Public Facilities and would merge the Commercial Service with the Industrial Service to just make it Industrial and Commercial Service or IS zoning. So it gets rid of just the specific Commercial Service. Next one, please. As I briefly stated, the map amendments will commence immediately after, uh, the City Council review and determination on the Land Use and Development Update. It does require its own public hearing process. So when those map amendments are completed, the draft amendments, um, we will be back before Planning Commission to very carefully review those various amendments, proposed amendments to the map for recommendation to City Council. Now, because the Land Use and Development Code and the zoning map are going at slightly different times, the, uh, part of the consideration and part of the ordinance for the Land Use and Development Code, would that would be that it would not be effective until the zoning map is effective. So the effective date would be extended to meet that at the zoning map, which also makes sure that we make, we change the zoning map quickly. Next slide, please. The next kind of overall reaching category of amendments is related to development standards. Uh, specifically chapter, uh, again, chapter fourteen oh nine in the zoning code. Uh, the development standards are in part two and in part three. So I briefly listed out here before you what the, um, highlighted titles are of the subsections of those, of those two parts. So district regulations, you have, uh, the base and overlay districts. So whether it's commercial, residential, agricultural, or is there an overlay which would include, um, the planned development overlay or a special, what's, I'm sorry, specific plan, that's the word I'm trying to think of, forgive me, a specific plan, um, overlay. It also includes use classifications and definitions. As I briefly mentioned, uh, they have been updated to meet or to match what today's trends are and what today's definitions are. Um, development standards have been simplified and put into tables, so they're easier to read. Um, development standards for districts are also updated to reflect more of the modern trends for, for development and what and development currently needs versus what was identified in nineteen ninety-seven. Part three is supplemental standards. So general site regulations, accessory structures, bridleway setbacks, fencing and landscaping, structure heights, something that's a little bit more general. Um, also includes the sections for affordable housing, density bonuses, incentives. Uh, that's one of the, these three areas are one of those higher topics where we basically more generally refer to state law. Those, in terms of housing, um, kind of change on the annual basis. So instead of having to update it annually, it is more effective and make sure that the code is currently in up-to-date to refer to the sections of the state law. So that's what those sections do. Also, uh, so it's also where the non-conforming use part, um, found a home, parking and loading, uh, signs, these are all sections that are currently in the Land Use and Development Code, but they're not as easy to find or to locate, and they're scattered a little bit more. Whereas here, they're very, very clearly located in similar areas and also include more tables and graphics. Next slide, please. The next major piece, and this really also ties to zoning changes, uh, over the years, we have had, I think it's eighteen policy plans. Uh, you see an example here of the interchange business park policy plan. Uh, it's just one of the eighteen, and each of those policy plans, um, has different planning areas. And each of those planning areas have slightly nuanced uses or development standards. Uh, but what we've noticed through the audit is that most of those policy plans are either fully built out or have been changed to simply refer to the Land Use and Development Code, making the policy plans kind of not necessary. So the Land Use and Development Code is proposing to get rid of the policy plans and the, the land within those policy plans will go to land use designations based on the planning areas in those policy plans. If you could hit the next arrow, please. So as an example here, you'll see Area One. It's kind of small, but it says office commercial is, uh, what Area One is generally referred to uh, in this plan, in this particular policy plan. It is more based on the land uses identified in the policy plan and based on the location being right there on the interchange of five oh five. It is more likely and more similar to have either highway commercial or office commercial uh, as that particular zoning and not have to refer to the policy plan. You could do the arrow two more times, please. Same thing with Area Two and Area Three. You have office industrial for Area Two would very simply go to the Commercial slash Industrial Service District, which is the IS District. Then Area Three is very clearly industrial, which would stay industrial, but would become the Industrial Park District as opposed to the policy plan. Next one, please. Here's a list of the eighteen different policy plans. So this is in part why we or why the zoning map will take a little bit of time. It will be moving on it as quickly as possible, but we do have to carefully look at, at each of these policy plans and make sure that we don't create any inconsistent or non-conforming uh, issues. Uh, next. The one exception will be the, um, Low Lagoon Valley Policy Plan. That will actually be incorporated as a specific plan overlay. So that area, um, will be treated a little bit differently. It will still have an overlay, but it won't be a policy plan anymore. Next slide, please. Adjacent to policy plans are also the specific plans, kind of something that we've been working on more recently. Uh, right now, we have five specific plans, and of course, you have the downtown specific plan that is in progress and, um, hopefully will soon be approved. Each of these specific plans are standalone documents currently. Uh, however, chapter fourteen point zero nine point one nine zero will codify those specific plans. And each of those will be given, uh, zoning related to the specific plans with that overlay kind of look to it. Can you push the next arrow? Identifies where the policy plans are, or I'm sorry, the specific plans, um. So that will become actually part of the code going forward. Next slide, please. Lastly, uh, so we had, in the beginning of November, we issued and published the final draft form of the Land Use and Development Code. Since then, we've had a few interesting things happen, both from countercalls or counter inquiries, but also in state legislation that additional revisions have been made in the month of January, or I'm sorry, in the month of December. Specifically, we have recycling facilities. Uh, there was an inquiry related to unmanned, the unmanned containers that you see in shopping centers. Um, our code didn't specifically or clearly address, uh, the proposed, either of the codes actually didn't clearly specifically address what that use was or how it can be governed. Uh, in doing a little bit of quick research, I was able to, to find that those are generally referred to as unmanned clothing or textile donation containers. So now in our definitions found in fourteen point zero two, uh, recycling facilities specifically addresses what those are and gives, and, um, gives the development standards, uh, some control and some regulations on how those can be manned and, and move forward. As I mentioned, the downtown specific plan is anticipated to be approved soon. The Land Use and Development Code before you does not include the downtown specific plan inside of the code because, of course, it's not an approved document, but it is anticipated to be approved shortly. So in fourteen zero nine one nine zero zero two zero, subsection F would be added, uh, to specifically identify the downtown specific plan. And then the related map revisions would be incorporated while we're updating the zoning map as well. And lastly, SB nine was a piece of, one of the major pieces of housing legislation that was approved late last year uh, related to, um, subdividing single-family lots and putting, uh, additional homes on the extra lots. Again, with housing legislation being something that constantly changes, we felt it best to, yes, address it in the Land Use and Development Code, but not to specifically call out all the nuances because there's a decent possibility that it might change, much like the accessory dwelling unit laws have changed every year for the last three years. So what we, what we chose to do is, um, there are a couple of tables, table fourteen zero nine zero six zero uh, and fourteen eleven zero one zero point A, uh, will now include little, um, asterisks essentially, so it identifies that duplexes or subdivision of single-family lots are permitted under circumcercerstances, and there will be a little footnote that is added on there that refers to the sections of state law for the more details when it's applicable. Similarly, section fourteen zero nine two eight zero does the same thing. Next slide, please. General plan consistency. So this is, um, the Land Use and Update does implement the general plan. It defines, it more clearly defines land use designations to be consistent with the, or the zoning districts to be consistent with the land use designations. And, uh, specifically, there are multiple general plan goals and general, and action strategies that refer to promoting development, um, that's well thought out and attractive in the various zoning districts. And also specifically directs us to update and maintain policies and regulations to support development. So updating the Land Use and Development Code absolutely would, would bring us more current and up-to-date. Next slide, please. Links to that is the environmental determination, uh, because this is an implementation of the general plan and it does comply with action, uh, the goals and actions identified in the general plan. Uh, it is consistent with the general plan EIR documents. Uh, now, of course, those general plan EIR documents do or do include Or do include two separate documents since we did a recent update. So in general, it's the general plan, final EIR, which was the two thousand eleven document certified in two thousand fifteen. And then the final supplemental EIR, which more specifically identified and addressed VMT and updated the um. Energy Conservation Action Strategy, ECAS. And that was the one that was routed uh in twenty twenty and just recently adopted. Sorry, I guess last year adopted. Next item. Brings us to our recommendation. Um, staff does recommend or does ask that planning commission by simple motion. Recommend that the city council reaffirm the general plan EIR and then. Twenty twenty one supplemental EIR and recommend that city council. Adopt an ordinance that repeals and replaces the land use and development code divisions. Uh, I will take a moment real quick um and address one of the. Comments that was received earlier. I guess it was over the the four days we were out. Um, but that was presented to planning commissioners. Um, and that is. There was a request for another, an additional change uh related to schools specifically. Uh, so we did receive a comment where there is a request for planning commission to consider allowing schools as a conditional use. Uh, in general, commercial areas. Um, currently, uh, the land use and development code update. Uh, identifies schools as a public or semi-public use. And it's any primary or secondary, public, private institutional. Or instructional or parochial school that has curricula, curricula. Comparable to state requirements for secondary and primary um completion of education. So right now, schools are identif- are proposed to be permitted in public facility districts. Which is uh. Anywhere currently what we call community facilities districts, but um, public facility districts. Or as a conditional use in any residential district and that would be to promote the purposes of residential, which is to also provide. Sites for public and semi-public uses like parks and schools and daycares. Uh, but it is not allowed, schools are not allowed uh in any of the commercial districts. Uh, so there is a request to consider allowing a conditional use in um general commercial districts. Uh, which of course would be reviewed on a project by project basis. So with that, my presentation is done. I am open to any questions or comments.
Thank you and I love to that wonderful presentation. Um, I will open. The uh, the questioning up to commissioners if they have question. From Miss Lo. The uh, and I see Commissioner Beaumont.
I just have a quick question. Uh, I know that Buckingham was in a commercial industrial area. And I think the Kimmy school was also in a commercial industrial area to start with. Uh, is that still true?
Uh, Buckingham has moved to downtown area. So they're, they're in a.
I know it has moved, but it was in a commercial area.
I'd have to, offhand, I don't know exactly, but I I believe you're right. The Kimmy, and I think the Kimmy was also in a commercial area, but I don't know if Kimmy. The Kimmy school still is around, but yes, so um, going forward, that would not be allowed.
So those were exceptions and not the rule. Was that it?
Well, our, our current code allowed as a conditional use to um consider, consider schools.
I, I can try to answer that if, if you'd like, Christina.
Thank you, Payman. Yes.
Hi, this is Payman Bavan, the city planner.
Hey, Payman.
Commissioner Beaumont, uh, that's a good point. Um, I would keep in mind that um, some of the schools start out as, uh, what are called specialized schools. Which um, which are allowed in in commercial areas depending on um. If it's specialized school small, which is five thousand square feet or specialized school large, which is anything more than that. So I think what we've seen um. In this city over, I would say last probably ten or fifteen years, we've had some facilities start out as specialized schools and just expand. Um, I, I would have to look at the sort of the approval process for those two to, to give you more details. But it is somewhat related to the um, the letter that, that Christine is referring to about um twenty first century, which. They started out as um, as a learning center, as a tutoring center at Nutri. And were so successful that they just gradually grew, grew and grew. And now. You know, what the, what the Nutri policy plan had in mind for types of uses they wanted and what this land development code had in mind. Just don't seem to allow them to sort of go into some of the areas that they had um that anticipated. But if you'd like, we can certainly follow up with you on um, on those two examples.
Well, I, I just guess, I'm, I'm just trying to look at Barbara Dwyer's notes, email. And doesn't the city want to uh, keep that type of a, a business going and and work with those people?
Certainly, and, and um, and I, and I've met with uh, with Barbara a number of times. Uh, they, they've, like I said, have done a good job with their. Uh, with their business. As it relates to the nut tree, um, as, as uh, planning commission knows. Uh, the nut she was really, uh, there was a lot of sensitivity around what sort of um, a, a development that was going to be. So there were more rules in place for. Uh, for the nut tree than your typical uh shopping centers. And back when uh, the tutoring center, it would start out with the, with a different user from about ten years ago. Um, there was some debate uh at the, both the planning commission and city council, if that, this was a type of use that. Uh, the city wanted to see in a commercial area. So there were some limitations that were placed on it, um, primarily how big it could be and where it can be located. So it's not a matter of whether we um, want this type of use. We certainly do. It's just the uh, the locations are limited right now. And in terms of putting a school into a uh, a, a commercial area, that's something that. Right now, it's not something the city has anticipated, but certainly there would be questions of land use compatibility, traffic and parking if you're. Um, if we're looking at putting um, sort of a, a standards, you know, quote unquote, school in a, in a commercial area. But just want to provide some background with Nutri um actions for that one.
And Payman, it to, to add to that, uh, what the landers and development code is looking to do. So the current code, as Payman mentioned, identifies uh, small specialized school and large specialized school. And that can include a dance school, a martial arts school, or simpler purely a tutoring and after school tutoring program. That concept in the land just in development code is being proposed as being separated. So there is instructional service, which is where you'll find music or voice lessons, dance studio, martial arts. Tutoring facilities, those are separated from schools. When you have a school that operates in a full-time capacity like a. Vacavillionified school district would operate uh and um, provide services for a K three program. Or something along those lines, similar to state curriculum. That is identified as a school and that's, that's what the current code is looking to separate it out. And I, my understanding is in part that's for compatibility, kind of what. Payman was alluding to uh, compatibility concern when it's operating in a commercial facility versus. A residential or a um, public, public facilities district.
I appreciate that. I just hope the city would uh, find it in its uh. Wherewithal to work with this lady to find a, a suitable place for her to expand. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Beaumont. I see Commissioner Fortney and then I'll go to Commissioner Brecken.
Thanks, Brendan. Christina, educate me, how and where do mobile food truck? Impact or how do we deal with those in the land use development code?
Uh, Payman, I might need your help on this one also, but m- mobile food trucks are typically a temporary use. They're not, because they're not a brick and mortar stationary location. They are, they even now uh, get temporary use permits. And of course, we require that the, part of that permit application process include written permission from whatever. Um, parking lot that they're going to be in. So we know that they're not just imposing on someone else's private property. Uh, we're not proposing to change that. Now, of course, there are some developments, I believe downtown specific plan. Uh, and I know a couple of other upcoming developments under review include parking lots specifically for food trucks. Uh, but that is, that because they're a mobile temporary use, it's not a specific land use.
So somebody that was in the future looking for that, it would be called out in the, in the uh. Temporary permit, use permit area on the city website, the do and the don't, where they can, what they cannot do.
I will look that up for you as we speak. Payman?
Okay, right. Um, yeah, right now we've been looking at um, those types of operations as temporary commercial permits. And they've been pretty, um, I would say uh, simple to process. There were, there was a period, I think. Uh, last year, a couple of years ago, where we had sort of a series of requests to do that. Um, we haven't had as many um lately, but um, but, but they are considered temporary commercial permits. Now, when they, and this is when they are proposing to have their operations on, on private property. If it's on public property, you know, a public parking lot or, or park, they go through a separate process with uh, with our city manager's office.
And I can specifically answer that clearly, absolutely yes. Fourteen point zero nine point two seven zero point one eight zero, which is temporary uses. Does specifically list out item uh. I think it's D four, mobile food service underneath temporary uses. So yes, there is a clear process for mobile food services. Uh, in their, in the proposed land use and development code.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Thanks for the question, Commissioner Fortney. Uh, Commissioner Brecken.
Hi, I just wanted to thank everybody for um, sticking to this job. It's a big job and it's all going to be worth it with um. Things making more sense to your average user. Um, I had just a quick question about industrial, commercial versus industrial park. Can you tell me the difference?
Offhand, I can't tell you precisely what the difference is, but if you. Give me a few moments, I can find it within the code and explain what the differences are. I, as admittedly, I've gone through this multiple times, but I, I just, I can't commit it to memory.
Very specific question. Wendy, did, did you have other uh, comments or questions while, while Miss Love is looking it up?
No, I guess just when we end up doing the. Downtown specific plan and that event that gets approved, any changes to the code um. I guess would have to be, it would have to go before city council in ordinance changes, correct?
Correct. So any changes, any amendments to land development code goes to the process that we're going through right now, which it comes to planning commission for. Uh, a review for recommendation and then on to city councils for final action.
Okay.
And to follow up on your other earlier question, I am still looking it up, but I do have Roger on the line. Uh, who is our consultant and he, he and Mayha um largely, they're the ones who largely wrote this. So Roger or Mayha, are you able to? Provide what a difference is between industrial park and industrial services is?
Industrial, commercial, I think. Versus industrial park.
Mr. Vice Chair, this is Roger Eastman, Director with Laisa Wise Consulting. Thank you for inviting me to be a part of your meeting this uh evening. Christina, your answer is in chapter fourteen oh nine oh eight oh. Uh, industrial park is intended to provide for a variety of industrial manufacturing and warehousing uses. With compatible uses to support vibrant employment areas. And this implements the industrial park general plan land use designation. And then the commercial slash industrial service district. Provides for a wide range of industrial and service commercial uses to serve the needs of the community. And this implements the commercial service and the industrial park general plan land use designation. Hope that helps.
Yeah, I, I, I guess, bigger picture, I'm concerned we have so many warehouses. Going up um. In the U banks area and. I mean, I, we're not going to be, we're not changing the substantive law here, right, with what we're doing here, because it. It would be, um, I don't want to see warehouses going up other places. I, I just, I'm confused about exactly what we're doing.
Are you, so are you? So if I understand what your concern is, that we will put industrial uses in other areas that they're currently not, is that?
Yeah.
No, and, and that's, it's, okay, yeah, no, we're, we're not proposing to do that. So the, the industrial. Looking, if you were to look at the general plan, there are um, large gray blobs that are industrial areas. Those will remain industrial areas and we're not going to add more. Okay, thank you. Mm-hmm.
Uh, Commissioner Lightfoot.
Thank you. Um, I just have one uh, comment or question really. Um, I think it's more of a comment going forward with the zoning of schools. I could see why we wouldn't allow. Um, schools just to be allowed in commercial areas. The uh, something that comes to mind is something that we've all discussed together on this commission. Every member, um, cannabis, for instance, where we decided that we are going to put cannabis. Um, dispensaries in commercial areas and we made it a point to. Keep it away from schools and I think there's revision there about how, what the distance is. But I do see how um, private and charter schools are becoming more prominent. And um, I could see and be on board with approving them to be conditional use. Um, so that we could encourage more and. Um, give the opportunities to grow further. That's it.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner Lightfoot. Um. And uh, you know, Doug, I'm going to circle back to you. Do you have any other questions? Commissioner Beaumont?
You know, I have one comment and that's to Christina. You know, you told me you're going to bring the zoning map, map back to the planning commission. Once the land use development code is approved. And if you bring it back to the planning commission after March. You may get a completely different makeup of the planning commission based on the districts that we're going to have to fill. Uh, on the uh, on the planning commission. So you may be given this. And when you come back, you may have different people looking at it. That's my only uh, comment. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that point.
Fair point. Um, and Commissioner Aldrich. Jan?
Oh, sorry, I couldn't get my microphone to open. Um, it seems like we've been at this forever. Uh. I think I was around in twenty fifteen or when, oh, six, when it started. But anyway, um, no, I, I, it's progressed beautifully. Um, a lot, a lot of work has been put into it, a lot of um. Time and effort by the Wiseman group and, and everyone else. And I think it's. I think it's ready to go to the city council.
Thank you, Commissioner Aldrich. Um, I, I would like to now invite. Public comment on uh, this item. We have, we have by simple motion, two items before the commission. Uh, to reaffirm the general plan update EIR and the twenty twenty one supplement to the general plan update EIR. And we uh, are being asked to recommend that the city council adopt an ordinance that repeals and replaces. A number of divisions and uh, so with that, i- is, do we have any public comment on this item? Albert, you're going to have to help me. I, I, I don't see any public comment, but maybe it's just on my end.
I don't see any public comment either. There's no hands raised.
Okay, um. Last call for public comment.
No public comment.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, I, I see we have attendees, but I, I just want to make sure that everyone gets a chance to be heard. It's, it's in the Zoom environment. It's hard. To uh, know for sure. Um. Unless, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment and we will now take it up for uh. Deliberation uh, among the members of the commission. If there's no deliberation, I'll entertain a motion.
Commissioner Beaumont will move.
Moved by Beaumont? Do we have a second?
Second by Aldrich.
Second by Commissioner Aldrich.
Vice Chair, if I may clarify, uh, as part of this movement, are we adding the recommendation that council um consider allowing schools as conditional uses in general commercial?
Andrea, I'm gonna turn to you for uh how we would do that.
So at, at this point, um, the simple motion is, is recommended um that, that staff has prepared. Um, Plan, Planner Love had um added a potential amendment that the commission could make to the motion if they so desire. So um, if I, from, from my understanding, the motion on the floor by Commissioner Beaumont is um the simple motion that stated on your screen right now. And it's been seconded by Commissioner Aldrich. Um, I think that you would proceed to a roll call vote now, um, and unless the chair wants to survey the commission for um. An, an amendment to that motion.
Vice Chair, this is uh member Beaumont. Could I make an amendment to that to uh certify that uh I would prefer the amendment included?
Please do, Commissioner.
And I recommend the uh, the motion with the uh, uh stated amendment to be included.
And I will second that.
Uh, uh, Ms. Borba, is, are we, are, does, is that clear for what, what we're recommending to the council?
Uh, Planner Love, can you please um state the, the motion for the record?
Yes, so the motion would be to reaffirm the general plan update E I R and the twenty twenty one supplemental, supplement to the general plan E I R. And recommend that the city council adopt an ordinance that repeals and replaces divisions. Fourteen point zero one, fourteen point zero two, fourteen point zero four, fourteen point zero five, fourteen point zero nine, fourteen point eleven, fourteen point twelve, fourteen point fifteen, fourteen point seventeen, fourteen point eighteen, fourteen point twenty five. Fourteen point twenty six and fourteen point twenty seven. Of the land use and development code with the proposed final draft revisions. And to include a revision to allow schools as a conditional use in general commercial zones.
Thank you.
And so I think that comports with the motion. Uh, that, that was a mouthful. Um. I think we can uh begin the roll call. Nancy, please.
Mr. Saldridge?
Yes.
Beaumont?
Yes.
Brecken?
Yes.
Portney?
Yeah.
Lightfoot?
Yes.
Vice Chair Klein?
Yes. Okay, congratulations, uh, uh Planner Love. That was a, 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 a big, a big and underrated project. I'm glad that we're able to move that forward. And with that, uh, we'll go ahead and close public hearing. Um. I will now uh ask Director Morris to please proceed with the status reports, uh, item nine.
I think you, Vice Chair Klein.
Excuse me.
Item eight first.
I, I, item eight, I, I misspoke.
No worries. Um, while the presentation, there's the presentation as if by magic, so I'm gonna go ahead and um talk a little bit about the new city council commission appointment policy. Uh, next slide, please. So this is to go over, um, I'm summarizing the memo, but I'm gonna go in a little bit more detail here this evening. Uh, the council's newly adopted policy adopted on December fourteenth of twenty twenty one. Uh, which changes how commissioners are appointed to the planning commission. Uh, really reflecting that council members are elected by district, and so commissioners going forward are going to be appointed by district. Next slide, please. So the way the newly adopted policy would be implemented is that commissioners will be appointed to staggered terms by district. In a way that will assure that the city council member from each district and the at-large mayor has a representative appointed from a pool of applicants. It's identified through a nomination process. And so there'll be an appointment list, um, which is actually, there isn't a recruitment there right now, looking for applications to be on the planning commission. Uh, the deadline to apply is February fourth at five P M. And ultimately, um, this is going to elicit our candidates, um, who will then be um going through a selection process. Next slide, please. So the nomination selection process um allows um all members of the, the city council, um, they'll receive. All the applications for their district. They will be able to recommend up to three applicants from their district. And if there aren't any qualified appointments within their district, that council member can nominate qualified applicants from other districts. So first choice, council member looks at the applicants, chooses three to advance through the selection process. Second choice, there aren't any qualified applicants, they can then um look at qualified applicants from other districts. The mayor has the opportunity to identify up to three applicants that reside anywhere in the city, and then. All those applicants advanced through the selection process where the mayor, the nominating council members and the commission staff liaison, in the case of the planning commission, that will be me. Uh, will review the applications and then may decide to hold interviews or waive interviews and make a selection. Really complicated, but ultimately I hope that, that's clear. Uh, next slide, please. Actually, I just covered most of this. So, once the, there is a set of recommended candidates, uh, they will go onto a council agenda. And the council will ratify the mayor's decision to make these appointments based on the, the feedback from the nominating council member. And then the goal is that all of this happens no later than the first council meeting in March. So one of the commissioners this evening alluded to this. Um, the idea is process will have. It could be the same planning commission, could be a different group, but that new group will come together at the very beginning of March, and then will therefore. Become our seated commissioners. And so we're gonna go to the next slide, so I'm gonna get through this so we can get through the rest of our agenda. Um, each, the terms of office for planning commissioners is actually still two years, but for this transitional period. Um, three of the members are gonna be appointed to an initial one-year term, and. The remaining members are going to get two-year terms, and this assures that a, a year from now. There'll be an opportunity for some people to leave the commission, some people to come on, and then we'll have a staggered, staggered appointment process. We won't have a case where. All the commissioners' terms are expiring on the same day, like they are uh right now. Uh, let's go to the next slide. Um, if there, in the event that there were vacancies, like we get people appointed and there's still vacancies. Um, if the person, if there's less than six months in a term, um, there'll be. We will try to use the applications from that prior appointment process, and if it's been longer than that. Uh, the, the vacancy will be posted and there'll be a, a full application and nomination selection process um all over again. So that, I think it's getting late. That is my quick summary of the process. Um, just as a reminder to all of our seated commissioners. If you're interested in remaining on the commission, please turn in your application. I've heard word that I think most or many of you have, in fact, turned in your applications. They are due on February fourth at five thirty P M, so I just encourage everyone to be mindful about that. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them.
Thank you, Director Morris. Are there any questions for Director Morris for our business item? Excellent. Um, uh, Director Morris, we have you as well for status update, assess report on development of major projects, item nine.
Thank you, Vice Chair Klein. I'm gonna actually cover the first two, um, actually, I'm gonna cover A and then have other staff cover B and C. So our building division uh status update, as I've been, I'm providing this because we currently have an interim building official who just started last week, and we're recruiting our permanent building officials, so. That person will hopefully be here in the future. Uh, but in December of twenty twenty one, the building division collected two point one million dollars in permit fees. Three hundred and sixty permits were issued, including thirty-nine permits for new single-family units and accessory dwelling units. And one thousand forty-three inspections were completed. It was a very busy month. Uh, special items of note for December include that we issued eight hundred and twelve solar permits, of which seventy-nine were pulled online. Uh, thirty-nine single-family homes passed final inspection and are ready for move-in, and a, a pair of building code enforcement cases were opened. That includes the building division report. Actually, I am gonna go ahead and tackle advanced planning before turning things over to senior planner Enel. Uh, for advanced planning, I believe the commission is pretty aware that a lot of the focus has been on the downtown specific plan and on the land use and development code update. Um, I just wanted to note that the other main item that the team is currently focusing on is the annual status report on the general plan. And that also includes the housing element progress report um that is required by the state to happen every year. So those things are headed your way, um, I believe, next month. And now we will go to the current planning uh report.
Thank you, Director. The map provided on the screen is to help the commission understand where these projects are happening. We, for District One, we received a new project. It's a project over here at the very northeast sector of the city along Interstate eighty. It is a request to amend. Uh, the city's uh text and map to add a new technology park uh. Uh, chapter within the municipal code for the sole purpose of adding a battery storage project. On a piece of land, a twenty-acre parcel off of Midway Road, and so that is a merit hearing request that staff will be bringing before. The uh city council to get their consent on whether or not we should proceed with formally reviewing that detailed project. Also within District One, uh, the city staff approved two projects. The first was the Vacaville Warehouse and Distribution Center, which. Is a project that contains two buildings, uh, one with two hundred fifty, fifty-seven thousand square feet, another one. Hundred and seventy thousand square feet on a twenty-seven point three-nine acre parcel off of Cessna and Aviator Drive. Uh, the second approved project was a modification to the Midway Commerce Center off of U-Banks Drive, south of Midway Road, and that was to combine uh. About five buildings into one to form a total of one point two three million square feet of potential warehouse for new projects, either. Distribution or manufacturing businesses. Uh, in districts two, three, and four, there were not a lot of new projects going on in those areas. In District Five, we received a recent medal for the Oak of Apartments. That's a project containing sixty units. For affordable, uh, that project has changed from its original affordable project to senior restricted housing also will remain affordable. It's a two point one-one acre site off of four seventy-five West Mona Vista Avenue. Uh, at the southeast corner of Mona Vista and South Orchard Avenue. Uh, a new project that we received, a smaller one off of Bella Vista Road, there's a storage facility, and there's a request to. Uh, add a smaller storage building within that existing storage facility. Uh, that one was in District Five. In District Six, we received a recent medal for some new house plans by. Um, Richmond American Homes over in the villages, uh, Vannan Development, south uh east corner of the city off of Leisure Town Road. We also received new projects for uh Van and Co., that's a new subdivision for a hundred and fourteen single-family lots. Uh, and there is a rezoning request as, as part of that to change the agricultural zoning district. To residential density with six thousand, six thousand square foot lot size. That one is off of Vannan Road. And that one will be coming to the commission at some point in the future. Uh, and that kind of concludes it for current planning activities from the month of December.
Uh, thank you very much. You know, there, there is a question that um I, I've heard about warehouses. Can you? Just quickly, uh, let us know, what, do we have a, a, an atypical amount of warehouses approved in Vacaville?
Uh, well, what we have is industrial park areas. And the interchange business park and Vacaville Golden Hills Business Park areas. That are designed to accommodate large warehousing or large industrial buildings. Um, that house a variety of different land uses, uh, such as warehousing and dis- distribution. Um, primarily, there's, for instance, uh, Amazon Warehousing that's off Rocker Drive. Uh, whether or not it would be abnormal, I don't, I don't know if we could put that description on. The type of development that we've been seeing for warehousing and distribution. I can only tell you that we're getting really close to uh the extent of what. Vacant lands we have for accommodating new industrial projects uh in the city, so uh that's kind of where we're headed to for those industrial properties.
Very good. Thank you, Albert. Are there any commissioner questions? Commissioner Brecken?
Yeah, I, similar warehouse question. Um, so the planning commission doesn't approve the warehouses? Is that? Um, staff that approves that?
Correct. That is a decision that is solely reserved for the director of community development, and it's mainly because. These uh industrial projects for buildings are located within uh previously approved policy plans. Uh, one of them is the interchange business park policy, and another one is Vacaville Golden Hills. And those are primarily the locations where we're seeing a lot of these projects. And those are documents that were previously approved by city council uh some time ago, and as part of the. Implementation of subsequent projects within those areas. Um, as a, as an attempt to help streamline development with those locations. Uh, the approval process was kept at the director's level rather than planning commission.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Beaumont?
Yeah, I would just comment that uh being at the intersection of five oh five and eighty makes us a beautiful place to have a lot of warehouses. Where people can use the transportation that we have available, and it's, it's, it's a positive for Vacaville, not a negative.
Thank you, Doug. Uh, are there any other commissioner comments or questions? Gonna skip the, the roll call question here and.
I would just like to say, Brandon, you did a great job tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Doug. Um, that, that moves us into commissioner comments.
Vice Chair Klein, we still have the director's report. Sorry.
Oh, yeah, excuse me. Um, Aaron, uh, Director Morris, please, go ahead.
I'm gonna speed through item ten. I, it will take any questions you have. So on the topic of council actions pertaining to planning commission items. Uh, the only thing that happened since the commission last met is that the council did not approve the Allison Apartments, and we've talked about that a lot this evening, so I'm gonna move forward. Just looking ahead, uh, the ca- city council will be reviewing the downtown specific plan. At their next meeting on January twenty-fifth, and at a subsequent meeting, they would consider adopting it. And they also have a special meeting coming up on January thirty-first to hear the Allison Apartments project. And then also in February, they will be considering the adoption of the land use and development code, um, as you all reviewed this evening. Um, looking a little further ahead, uh, the council is also gonna receive a general plan status update in February. And they would be then, of course, appointing planning commissioners at that first meeting in March. Topics related to the planning commission, and this one's actually a hybrid, it's about both. There will be a joint session scheduled of the city council and the planning commission, and this is to really launch the housing element. Which includes the housing element, safety element, and environmental justice elements, and sort of this package of three things. So you commissioners, if you, I think you've already heard from Nancy, if you haven't, you will, uh, we're looking to find that perfect date. It's probably gonna be in March when we can all get together, city council, planning commission, to receive a presentation and really get that process going. Um, and then a couple of things, just to kind of, I'm going, I think I'm gonna move on to item number. See announcements, um, just so that commission's aware, um, s- our advanced planning team is beginning work on the city's municipal service review this month. And this is something that the city needs to submit to LAFCO every five years. So ours expires this year, and they're going to be working on that. Along with that, a topic that may be of commissioner interest is that we are working on an urban reserve land inventory, and this is something that's required by the city's urban reserve ordinance. So we're gonna look at our sites, figure out, does the city need additional land, for, for example, from the urban reserve to meet our residential needs over the next twenty years? And then the council can consider, or giving policy direction to staff about the urban reserve. Um, and then the only other announcement, uh, two, two last announcements. One, uh, we had our first housing element subcommittee meeting. Uh, from staff's perspective, it went very well with our three subcommittee members. It was very informative, I think, for all parties, uh, but especially for staff. And then the last announcement is that I, we did launch the recruitment for our chief building official, and that launched this last week, and it's gonna close at the beginning of next month. In the meantime, just so you all are aware, I have hired an interim chief building official, a recently retired gentleman. Um, and he is here, Gary Nordahl, um, helping me keep our building division moving while we get that, look for that permanent fill. So that's, those are all the updates that I had for this evening, but I would take any questions you have.
Are there commissioner questions uh for Director Morris? Commissioner Brecken?
What is an urban reserve?
So there are lands in, in the. So there are lands in the city of Vacaville, adjacent to the city of Vacaville that are designated in the general plan urban reserve. So they're particularly along Leisure Town Road. They are lands that may be able to be annexed into the city and developed for residential purposes. But when the council did the general plan in 2015, these lands were not identified for specific residential uses. They were held as urban reserve so that five years from the adoption of the general plan, the city can take a closer look at what kind of housing we really need out there. So that's the urban reserve. There is a detailed ordinance on the books that explains the process for the council examining whether they want to open those lands up for residential development.
Thank you.
Other commissioner questions for Director Morris? You know, I could reserve this for comments. So I just want to say, you know, I really appreciate the work that went into the housing element. And, you know, Aaron, it was just, I thought it was great the way that the staff is working on public outreach. And it looks like this is going to be a great way to engage the public in this important topic. And to have the other, have the commission paying special attention to this topic, I think, is a great public service. So I realize that the staff is working on a lot of things and this is one more thing. So I want to acknowledge that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that, we'll move into commissioner comments. Item 11. Commissioner Brecken?
A well-run meeting. And I just had a comment that maybe we could have a joint meeting with the Parks Commission at some point. So that or so that we can just talk about things like, you know, that came up today where maybe we need, you know, parks in, you know, certain areas, like in the Allison area. I think it'd be good to have a more integrated approach to parks. Thanks.
Points well taken. And I assume that Aaron is taking notes.
Absolutely. Yes.
Thank you, Aaron. Commissioner, Commissioner Fortney?
No comments, but salute to you, Brandon Klein, Vice Chair. Wonderful meeting.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Lightfoot?
Thank you. Yes, I appreciate Brandon being put on the spot and executing well. I don't have any other comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ralph. Commissioner Beaumont?
I happen to get my comment in early, Brandon. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Commissioner Aldrich?
Great job tonight on conducting the meeting. I know how tough it is having done it in the past for a year or so. So congratulations. You did an outstanding job.
Thank you very much, Jan. I appreciate that. And I, there is one comment that I'll make that was brought to my attention from a member of the public about a project turnkey related establishment in Vacaville. And I just want to give Director Morris a chance to elaborate on this, this encampment.
Thank you, Vice Chair Klein. The city of Vacaville is aware that there is some housing happening in Vacaville that may involve some funding from the city of Vallejo. And we are looking at that site and that housing and whether it's permitted or not. It happens to be at a mobile home park, which is a little bit challenging because local home parks are regulated by the state of California through HCD and not through cities. But I guess I just want to say for the benefit of you and for the public that the city is aware of the issue and we're diligently working on it. And we are keeping the council apprised as we make some progress. So that's all I have for now on that one.
Thank you very much, Aaron. And I'm glad to see that that planning is on top of this. And if we, as commissioners, get questions about this in the community, we're able to confidently say that that staff is on top of this and, and a solution is forthcoming. So thank you very much for that report. And with that, I I've always wanted to say this. We're adjourned. Have a good night, Vacaville.